Sure.
Okay, let's do that.
Acting President Baines?
Here.
Councilmember Brand? President Brando?
Here.
Councilmember Capriolio?
Here.
Councilmember Olivier?
Here.
Councilmember Quintero? Councilmember Jean?
All right. All right, Jane, good to see you again today.
Yes.
Let's get started.
All right, good morning, Council. Public Utilities Department, their budget presentation starts on B-127. Just a couple of notes before we get started into the service impacts. The financial information for this department starts on B-132. And it's a total budget of $351 million. Primarily goes into capital. Because there's a great deal of capital that is contained within this budget's operating system. Also, I would draw your attention to a schedule on B-133, which is broken out by the fund classification. You can see there that it is primarily an enterprise department with some internal service departments. That is primarily utility billing and collection and their admin division. Oh. Have to repeat it? Okay. On page 132, there is a schedule that in essence rounds up or totals up all of the department's revenues and appropriations regardless of fund. So whether it's a capital fund or an enterprise fund, it's every fund that this department has control over and is in charge of. And basically, their entire budget, both operating capital, debt service, the whole ball of wax, as it were, is $351 million. Now, that encompasses several divisions, and those are broken out later on in the presentation. And that's actually a couple of schedules from now. So let me flip over to the next one for you, okay? The next one is on page B-133. And what that does is it breaks out the funding for this department by type of fund, whether it's general fund, or special revenues, or capital, or enterprise, or internal service. And this is a schedule that you see in every single department. And in this particular department, the vast majority of their funding is enterprise funding. It is not via grants, it is not via other special revenues, it is not general fund. It is enterprise fund. It is supported by the fees for service and the customer user charges that they collect. There is some internal service in this department. That is primarily the utility billing and collection division, which is exactly what it says. It basically collects the utility revenues. And their admin division, which is supported by the other enterprise divisions. Okay? The last schedule that I would draw your attention to is on B-134. And what this does is this breaks out the department by division. And what this basically does is it gives you a total of each one of the division's appropriations. So you can see what part each division plays in the overall departmental budget. You can see DPU administration, UBNC, you can see water, which is the largest by dollar amount division, solid waste and wastewater. And then you can see the total department, again, is $351 million. So there are three different looks at the department depending on where your interest lies and where you would like to go as far as looking at that and analyzing the department's appropriations. The last schedule, actually, that I would draw your attention to is down on the bottom of page 134, which is department appropriations by fund type. And this is a small schedule, basically breaking out their departments, again, one more way, via operating capital and debt service. And so you can see the various divisions there and how much of their budget is capital, how much of their budget is operating, and how much of their budget is debt service. So going on then to the revenue impacts. Back on page 130, we have the revenues. I would not bring your attention anything in particular. The solid waste and wastewater rates are based on existing structure, rate structures. The water rates for FY15 include the 25% rate increase. That's consistent with the four-year rate plan, which was adopted by the council in August of 2013. So that is consistent with council policy. Under the expenditures, primarily, these are broken out by division in the presentation. You can see that there are some minor increases for the employee satisfaction and engagement survey, a utilities move-in brochure that they're going to be distributing for new customers that will assist them navigating the utility universe. There's some additional postage and printing costs for utility billing and collection, and that's strictly to send out the bills. Under water, we have an increase in utility expenses, and this is basically just pumping power. This is the bills that they incur in actually pumping groundwater and to the various areas of the city. Water purchases, again, is slightly lower than the amount budgeted in '14, but is primarily status quo, about half a million dollars lower. The fire hydrant inspection fees, as we've been commenting a couple of times here before, have gone down. They've been decreased by about half a million dollars or more in the water division. So that is a decrease in expense for the water division. Under solid waste, it's a fairly status quo budget. They have well rehabilitation at the landfill that they must maintain, and that's been budgeted, along with their tipping fees. That has been budgeted without any adjustment for any ongoing discussions with the county, and that is a status quo item at this time. There will be a solid waste rate study. That is approximately $120,000. It's in the FY15 budget. And there is also some additional vehicle replacement funds for the vehicles, the solid waste collection vehicles, residential vehicles that they use. That has been delayed for a year because of the Measure G. And so now they are getting back into their replacement cycle of these vehicles and also the depreciation charges that go with them. The final settlement of the payment with Sunset is also in here, so that will be taken care of as well. The first two installments were paid in FY14, so that completes that obligation as well. Wastewater management, there are some technical requests and some equipment replacement that is also listed on page 131. The replacement primarily is of a, apparently, a scraper unit, which is 18 years old. That is about $900,000. And so that will assist the department and probably decrease in the amount of off-time, downtime, and mechanical problems that they have with that piece of equipment that they use on a daily basis out there. Under staffing, which I believe begins on page 135, the department is requesting 19 new positions across all of the multiple divisions in this department. DPU administration, obviously, the DPU department director, which has been defunded the last few years, has now been funded since we are now, I believe, in the final stages of choosing a DPU director. And so that position obviously has to be funded for next year. They are also advocating a community coordinator to assist in the public utilities issues that are coming up and to disseminate information to the public. This position will also be shared by the mayor's city manager's office, so the cost will be jointly between the enterprise funds and the general fund. The total cost of that position is, well, the portion that's in DPU admin is $37,000. The total cost of the position, I believe, is somewhere in the realm of $50,000, roughly. In the water division, they have some additional positions that they are asking for, consistent with their capital plan and with their maintenance plan. The additional pipe fitter crew, which consists of a water operator three, a water system operator two, two trucks, a backhoe, equipment and tools, et cetera, are being added to address small and moderate capital pipeline and well projects. And so that is also going to be funded by the rate increase. The additional water distribution crew, two water conservation representatives are also being added to increase the water conservation efforts that we have. And this is particularly, obviously, of note during these droughts. The wastewater management, again, they are also asking for some additional staffs, a staff assistant to assist in some performance measure data collection and the assignment and cataloging of wastewater and collection infrastructure conditions and doing customer service surveys. Also, a heavy equipment operator, which is replacing basically a temporary position, and this is now converting it basically to a permanent position. As in keeping with other departments in the city, we have been taking a very hard look at our temporary staff and determining which exactly, which positions actually are doing permanent work and thus need to be permanent positions. They are also asking for a permanent painter, since they have a great deal of work for those painters out there, particularly in corrosion control and treatment of the facility building, structures and pipes. And so as that facility grows older, those needs become greater. They have additional wastewater operator twos. This is primarily to replace, again, temporary positions with permanent positions. So I won't dwell on that anymore. The power generation system supervisor will oversee the maintenance of the power generation facility. There's a senior safety specialist, which is added because that's obviously a very important topic out there, that the safety of the employees out there be of paramount concern to them. And so they want to bring in a hazardous materials program, a respiratory protection program, and to enhance the programs they have out there now. An instrumentation specialist will be upgraded as well and will be added. And that will be working with the dewatering facility retrofit and the additional instrumentation that will come online next year. The laboratory technician is also being requested. As the requests and the regulatory requirements are becoming more and more arduous, more and more testing needs to be done, and so they are in need of additional assistance out at the laboratory facility. They are also proposing a chief of wastewater facilities maintenance. This will oversee the implementation of policy, standard, and operating procedures, as well as staff in the sewer maintenance division, which, a couple of years, as you recall, was brought under the direct control of this wastewater division. There is also, in the sewer maintenance division, going to be an additional video inspection crew. That's going to be providing daily routine video of the main lines and inspection of the aging infrastructure that we have here and to provide assessment and corrective action on issues and maintenance of the sanitary sewer system to prevent overflows or blockages. Finally, the solid waste division is defunding nine vacant waste collector lead workers. This was primarily due to the, well, the declining tonnages is one thing, and also the rerouting program. That was done at the very last of the last budget cycle. They rerouted their residential routes and found that they did not need as much staff. These are vacant positions that have been vacant for quite some time. And so in order to balance, well, not balance their budget, but to bring their balance more into reality, they have decided to delete these vacant positions so that their budgeted appropriations more closely resemble what their actual expenditures are. That is primarily the operational impacts of the department. I believe the assistant directors are here to answer any questions that you may have about the individual divisions or their capital program.
Thank you, Jane. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the public utilities? All right, Marina, come forward.
I have three minutes, and I'm going to use all three minutes, buddy.
Glad you have one minute.
Marina Magdaleno, I'm the business representative for Local 39. 4644 West Jaclyn, 937022. I want to address the council on the adding of the positions. It's been, I think it's a very critical issue. I deal with it, like, all the time, daily sometimes, in some of the areas. All of these, especially water and wastewater, have been operating, you know, with less people and are doing more. Our city has grown. And when you look at, you know, I always look at, when you talk about public safety, it's not just police and fire. It's the water that we drink, it's how we flush our toilets, it's all of these things. Because if you don't treat water for a 72-hour period, you can't drink that water. If you, if we don't have safe sewage, you know, running underneath our city, you know, can you imagine what it would happen? And so to not, you know, be cognizant of the issues that face our city on a daily basis, I think that, you know, we're not doing a service to the residents. I'm a resident of the city of Fresno, I pay taxes, I'm a homeowner. And I think that it is critical for us to be, you know, to make some, to allow the divisions to do what they need to do, and they do it very, very well. Our people are hard workers from all levels, from management all the way down. And I think that it's incumbent on you to make that decision and to approve, you know, what these divisions are asking for. You know, they're not wasters of money, and they're prudent in how they make their decisions on a daily basis, and I think that you should all support that. Thank you very much.
Any other members of the public like to comment on the DPU presentation so far? All right, Councilman Brand?
Thank you, Council President. Make sure I got the numbers right. So we are about 635 authorized positions now, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's the combination of water, wastewater, solid waste?
That's, yes.
Okay. And does the administration feel that we have sufficient number of people in, I know I've heard in these divisions, let's say water and wastewater. Okay. Because I know when I came in 2008, 2009, I remember talking to the people at the wastewater plant and the water treatment plant, and I know they lost, they were losing people to the state of California for engineers and so on that were paying more money. Are we still competitive, or are we, you know, able to retain Steve?
Steve Hogg, Department of Public Utilities, wastewater. So I think that it is an issue we struggle with ongoing, with maintaining our, being able to, to compete and recruit. There's, you know, it's a, there's a fairly limited number of people within the state in these specialized fields, especially the ones that require certification. So it is a fairly competitive market, and so it's an ongoing struggle. And so we're always looking for ways and opportunities to get good people here, so.
Okay, and either you or Martin, on the wastewater division, I noticed in the report it said that we are trying to increase the ability to reclaim about up to 72,000 acre feet. Is that what our goal is, I got that right?
I'm sorry, could you?
Reclamation, that we're trying to increase that up to 72,000 acre feet from the water that processes through the sewer waste treatment plant?
Yeah, currently, coming into the treatment facility is about 72,000 acre feet a year is about what comes into the facility. Currently, we treat that to a secondary level. About 10% gets used for direct ag irrigation. The remainder of that goes into the infiltration ponding facility. We are looking to bring on the first phase of advanced treatment, which was identified in the recycle water master plan that the council adopted several years ago. And so, yes, we are looking, actually, this year, hopefully, toward the first phase of construction of that advanced treatment. That first phase will be about 5 million gallons per day. Ultimately, we hope to, the plan looks to take our advanced treatment for recycled water, that higher level that we can use for more, less restrictive uses up to 25,000 acre feet a year. So that's about a third of what goes out to the treatment facility.
So that would be, the amount of reclaimed water then would be about 25,000 acre feet?
Well, that's what we're looking forward to do at this higher, more advanced level, is about 25,000 acre feet, about a third.
I mean, given the drought that we have in California, and I would say we should, you know, use all our resources in that direction. I know this is for irrigation and, you know, and everybody's tapping into the same aquifer right now, and it's being overdrawn, so.
Yeah, I think we definitely need to recognize the water that we reclaim out there as an important part of our water resource portfolio. And whether it's to be used for direct potable offset in the urban area, which is what we're looking to do with that 25,000 acre feet, or to be able to do additional recharge or opportunities for other kinds of potential exchanges or stuff, yes, I think it's definitely a very valuable part of our water resource portfolio that we want to put to great use.
Okay, thank you. In the water division, what is the status now on our cash flow? I mean, are we having the ability to meet our obligations with delays in the federal grants and not having commercial paper? Pardon?
What was, could you repeat that question?
From a cash flow point of view in the water division, do we have sufficient resources to cover the month-to-month bills that come in?
Absolutely. And we are currently, we've set a goal based on the fact that we're, oh, Martin Corrine, Assistant Director of Public Utilities, Water Division. I saw the look.
On the bond?
We're working on, we recognize there's going to be some substantial financing that's going to be coming up as a part of our CIP program.
Right.
And so we have set a goal of 180 days of cash on hand and also of maintaining our coverage tests for our bonds. So we are able to meet all of our obligations going forward and to maintain those goals in order to provide an adequate financing opportunity.
Okay, that's based on the water rates that were approved last August, that the first segment was implemented in September. I believe the second one is scheduled for July. In the event there's either a judicial or a ballot that ultimately rejects the current water rates we have now, my understanding is that it would then default to the original rates, right? We'd go back to the pre-September 2013 rates, correct?
It's proposed, I believe, in the ballot that we would return to 2008, which would actually be 2010 rates, because that's when we had a last, had a metered rate, is in 2010. Rather, I won't dwell on the legal issues, but I will say that if that was to happen, as I was pointing out, a couple of things. First of all, revenue would not cease to come in, it would change our revenue. Most of the expenses, as was pointed out by Ms. Sumters, that was by CIP, and it was basically bond funding. So if we don't sell those, the future debt doesn't come online. We actually have the funds in our current budget to cover our existing debt, and we have 180 days of cash in order for us to figure out where we're going. So financially?
Let me rephrase the question.
We'd be solvent.
Okay, if we have to go back to the prior rates in November this year, okay? Then how does that affect our ability for cash flow projecting in the future? How does that impact our ability to meet, I believe, a 25% reserve requirement on bonds?
We would be required to revise this budget, this year's budget drastically.
Let me ask City Manager.
I think the question that you're asking, that if we have to revert back the rates based on, and nothing happened going forward, in other words, council or their decision was not to increase rates. The department, I think, has about a year of cash, or based on the lower revenue stream, could sustain itself for a year, before which time it would essentially require additional subsidy or additional revenue to meet its current obligations.
So to your question, we would have a year before we would have to do some form of rate increase.
But let's presume that we've rescinded the rates, and we're no longer raising rates, but rates are at the same level. And at what point in time would the city be in technical default of the bonds because they don't have the 25% reserve? How long would that be?
It wouldn't be, because the city can't default on the bonds.
Let me continue, let me rephrase.
We would have to pass a rate increase in a year.
No, no, no. Let me back up.
Okay, sure.
If they get to the point where there's inadequate revenues that come in to support the operation, including its debt service, the city would have no choice but, other than to use general fund, to backstop that obligation, because we're the ones who wrote the check.
Okay, so within roughly one year, if the rates are rescinded and there's no future rate increases, just like the city did on the parking garage, the parks, bonds, and so many others, we would then be in a position that the general fund would have to subsidize the water division. Is that correct?
You could not continue without a rate increase, that is correct.
I'm just saying, what's out there?
That is correct.
So at that point in time, either, and I don't think we're talking about one or two million dollars, I think we're talking about a substantially higher number. The general fund, which includes police, fire, public works, parks, all those essential core services, would have to sacrifice and subsidize the water division. Is that correct? Okay. The only other remedy would be either sell the asset, privatize, right? If you're unable to raise the rates, for whatever reason, political will, legal challenges, whatever, then that is the logical consequence of being unable to raise the rates. It'll eventually, within one year, impact the general fund. Okay. Make sure I got that clear. Thank you, Martin.
One other thing I'd like to point out, this, Henry reminded me, and we had this conversation, there's a legal issue that we hadn't yet had a chance to talk, discuss, that he and I have discussed recently. The bond covenants are based on enterprise revenue. So you wouldn't be able to backstop it with a general fund. You would default. If you don't pass a rate increase, the water enterprise will default. Because it requires, it's based on that year's water enterprise. And so actually, it's worse than, it's worse than that.
I guess as an organization, Martin, I don't think any of us up here are talking about defaulting on anybody.
Right. So all I'm pointing out, City Manager, is that the, that your point is well-made, that no matter what the, no matter what the issue is, the outcomes that would come out of that are unacceptable on the part of the city and the ratepayers.
Either way, it's going to be a financial disaster for the city. It could, the other consequence could be bankruptcy unless they can find the money to do it, okay? So thank you, Martin.
Thank you.
And again, I'm not even debating all the others, I'm strictly, strictly financial issues, okay?
With all due respect, Councilman, can we not use that word?
No, no, no. I just want to lay it all out there so everybody understands where we stand, okay? So there's nobody's going to say later, I didn't know about it, okay? All right. Okay, finally, on residential solid waste, we have a rate stabilization reserve, and we have a vehicle replacement, correct, City Manager?
Yes.
Okay. If we do not raise rates on solid waste, we leave them status quo, at what point in time do those reserve funds become depleted?
I think based on the most recent rate analysis that we've conducted, I believe it's sometime within the next year and a half, maybe even a little bit sooner, but at least 15 months out.
That's correct. I went to the CAFR in both water and wastewater, I'm sorry, water and residential solid waste, we're losing money.
Yes.
And they're, look, roughly around, on solid waste, around $3 million a year. Based, so that's depleting that reserve. So within 18 months, if we don't adjust the rates, the rate stabilization fund will be depleted. I do know that the fleet is, I think, an average of 10, 11 years old. There's got to be a point in time where you have to start buying new trucks, okay? And the only other variable I can think of is the landfill site, which we discussed, you know, about a month ago, could possibly be some rate relief. Although I've talked to people since then that say, when you start factoring in travel time and so on, that it diminishes the potential savings, as well as there's other factors that influence it too. But what would we have to do in terms of rate increases to avoid being in the same position that water would be without raising it? We'd basically be, that enterprise department would be basically out of money. And again, would the general fund have to backstop that?
Yes, but Jerry, you can go ahead.
Councilman Jerry Schuber, Solid Waste Division. We, our current studies show that we're looking at a 21% increase over five years, the first one being between 6% and 9%, and then a 4% increase in rates over the next four years, depending on where we come in with landfill costs, as well as what the trucks do end up costing us. Those are variables that we're still analyzing because the landfill agreement is impenned.
Okay, I know you have a consultant reviewing the rates now. So basically, to refund or properly fund the rate stabilization reserve, to bring up money to have enough, you know, like I'm assuming, a rotation of three or four vehicles per year and pay all the bills. Because basically, it's essentially like, you got a business, you start in point A, you go to point B 10 years later. If you never raised your rates, your energy costs went up, gas, materials, labor, everything went up. So eventually, if you don't raise rates appropriately, you go bankrupt. That's what happens in the private sector, and apparently it happens in the public sector, too.
Yes, it does.
So you're saying a 6% to 9% raise within the next 12 months, over the next five years, roughly? over the next five years, roughly 21%?
Roughly 21.
Would provide the funding to restore those reserves, operating capital, and basically do what we're supposed to, pick up the garbage twice a week, do the job that we're, again, and the consequences of not doing that, again, would be the general fund potentially having to backstop it?
And also service, I mean, there's service reduction issues that we could be discussing.
Or we'd go to once a week garbage pickup.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Okay, so, there are consequences-
Yes, sir.
-for us to sit here and do nothing, okay? So, I'm, okay?
Well, and let me remind, that, that is why I've, I've advised the council that we'll probably be coming forward sometime in August to initiate the Prop 218 process to increase the rates, as, as Mr. Schuber has indicated. And understand that the, the five-year look shows a 6% to 9% and then 4% ongoing. So, what we're hoping is that negotiations around landfill costs, transfer fee costs, even our recycle contract and some other opportunities will allow us to mitigate increases in the future. Because the current projection shows that even beyond the four or five-year window, these rates are going to continue to grow by at least 4% annually.
And to contrast that with the 2012 UAC study, which had recommended five consecutive 3% reductions. In hindsight, was that even remotely possible?
It may have been at the time because there was commercial and multifamily issues in there as well. But in the UAC report, it also indicated that you had a water increase at the same time you had a solid waste decrease.
Right.
So, the, the analysis was to break even in the rate increases and decreases so that the pinch wasn't felt so much.
Okay. And then finally, correct me if I'm wrong, the recycling contract with Sunset Waste will expire March 2015? The contract with Sunset Waste will expire March 2015?
That is correct.
Okay, so, there's an opportunity for the city then to then do an RFP or Q to rebid that whole process-
That is correct.
-that I think would result in savings to the ratepayers and our ability to deliver services.
The solid waste division definitely has some very attractive opportunities over the next few years.
Okay.
That could, can help us ease those rates.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you, City Manager.
Councilman Danes.
Thanks, Council President. Councilmember Brand asked some of the, certainly asked a couple of questions that, that were, that I was going to ask, so I won't have to repeat a few of them. But really quick, who, who, I'm curious about the downtown, I'm, I'm sorry, about the community coordinator position that we're, that we're hiring. Can you, can you kind of explain to me in a little bit more detail what, what the goals of that position are?
Okay, that is a, you know, a position that we had had historically a while back to assist and, and we've kind of worked around it and without it for a number of years. But we're looking at as, as we move forward, as a community, there's a number of issues that, that we know it's important to keep the, the public informed on, make sure we, we understand their concerns and that we're addressing their needs and that they understand our issues. Things like the, the big recycle water program that we had just talked about with Councilmember Danes, the bringing on-
Brand?
Bringing on increa-, excuse me, I'm sorry, Councilmember Brand.
That's okay.
Bringing on increased water infrastructure, a number of the things that were just discussed with the opportunities and, and such that are coming up in the solid waste division. So, there's, I think there's, there's a lot of activity that, that you're going to be seeing coming up over the next number of years in the utilities department that it's important that we, we do proper outreach to our community.
Okay, so, I'm certainly glad to hear that, that we're contemplating outreach and, and I'm certainly, as you know, I'm all very supportive of that. And, and I guess I'll characterize my remarks this way around this position. When, when we hire this person and as we are developing plans of outreach for our community, I would certainly hope that we coordinate with the council offices and make sure that we're outreach to all those communities, even the marginalized ones. Because I, I can, I can tell you that one of the things that I've noticed since I've been here is we, as an institution, don't do a great job of reaching out to all communities. We have really good, we do a really good job of reaching out to those communities that typically are, are kind of low-hanging fruit, that read Fresno Bee, that watch the news. But some of our more challenging communities, we, we miss that. So, with this position, I'm certainly hoping that we'll coordinate and, and make sure we're reaching all communities and all council districts. In the downtown recycled wastewater system-
I just, just on, on that, I think it's really important. I think, you know, we recognize that, you know, you're the representatives of, of your district, your communities, and we want to make sure that, you know, we are doing a good job with, with that, those communications and that interaction.
Yeah, no, thank you. In the downtown recycled wastewater system, so I know, I think Councilmember Brand talked a little, little bit about that. When do we, and I may have missed this, when do we expect that to be online?
We're, we're hoping that, that, that's, that's a project, we're hoping to, to come to all the policymakers, the mayor, the council, to talk about the, the opportunities there with that project. We're looking to model something similar to after what the city of Anaheim has done that provides, does a couple of things. It provides a facility and opportunity to help demonstrate and educate our public on the importance of water and water resources. It also would provide an additional water resource to help with the development and the intensification of the downtown area. The other thing it does is it also frees up sewer collection system capacity in a, in a, a major trunk line that runs through the downtown area that has some capacity issue. So, it serves multiple purposes. We would hope to actually begin design on that project, assuming that we get all the, the, the goaded and the support from all the policymakers this late summer, probably about a nine to 12-month design period. And then probably somewhere in the neighborhood of a 18 to 20-month construction time. So, that puts us out, what about, probably about startup in about three years. But you'd be seeing, seeing activity hopefully starting late summer.
Okay, so, so, and I appreciate you explaining that to me. So, this is more, more than, than just kind of what it describes here. It's going to do more than just treat, the treatment and distribution facilities. It's going to do, be an educational component as well as an actual functioning component?
Well, I think, I think that's an opportunity we definitely like to consider and explore because we think it's, it's, it's an, an ideal location to look at those kind of educational opportunities to demonstrate that, I think, to the public that if it's, you know, if it's, if it's good enough for us to expect our citizens to make use of what we think is a very valuable resource that, you know, we should, we should look at making use in our, in our facilities as well. And so, I think there's some good opportunities there, not only to free, not only to provide that water resource for downtown, but to free up collection system capacity and, yes, hopefully, maybe even provide some educational opportunity.
And I, and toward the end of that, I see it says the anticipated increase on M and FISIL 19 will be approximately half a million dollars. What's the, what are we anticipating in the project, how much this project will cost?
I, I'm sorry, I had a hard time hearing you.
How much are we anticipating that this project will cost?
We're probably looking at the, the construction of the treatment facility probably in the neighborhood of 12 or 15 million dollars. It's, is what, is what we would anticipate at this point. Well, part of that initial phase will be to do a schematic design and, and begin, begin to take a closer look as we do some of the engineering, but probably somewhere in the 12 to 15 million dollar range.
Okay. And, okay. So, we're, we're certainly a few years out on that. And obviously, we're going to have some more discussion about, about what, what that is and what that will be, okay? I was also going to ask about the, the director, but it sounds like we're, Bruce, we're in a, for the, for DPU, we're looking, we're actively looking for a director right now, right? And we're in the-
We, we actually have a director who will be starting with this, I think, within, within the next week or two.
Oh, so, we've made an, we've made it-
Yeah, we've, we've made an offer, he has accepted and, what's that? He'll actually be starting Monday.
Oh, okay, okay, great. So, we will have a new department director starting as of Monday? Okay. And so, another thing I wanted to, to ask about was I see here on a B-130, we talk about the Employment Satisfaction and Engagement Survey. So, talk to, talk to me, talk to me a little, talk to me a little bit about that.
Okay, this is a, a program that the utilities department has utilized for a, a number of years. We think it's, it's important to understand the, the issues, the concerns of our employees and staff. It gives us an opportunity to, to gain input from them on, on their feeling about the, the direction of the department, their workplace, a number of those sorts of things. It helps us build our strategic plan for our department around when it comes to employee-related issues. And so, it's a, I think this is what about?
Sixth, sixth time, John, we've done it?
About the sixth, sixth time we've done it. Every, every few years, we go out and survey the employees and, and get feedback and input from them. And I think it's, it's a really valuable tool to help us stay connected with, with the needs and concerns of the employees.
And, okay, and so, let me ask, based on that, so, we've done this six times before. Do we do it yearly by any, I mean, how often do, how often do we do this? How many times have we done it over, what, what timeframe is that, the six times we've done that spanning, spanning?
There was, there was a time when we were doing it every year. I think we've done it about every other year the last few times.
So, out of that, I've never seen one. Is that a study that the council can, can actually review and see what, what the employees think?
Sure, I, I don't, yeah, we definitely could provide you the, the results of that, that, those surveys.
Yeah, so, so this would be just information for, a request for information. If you can give me the last six, the six studies you, such studies you've done, I'd like to, I'd like to review those and take a look at them. And what I, I guess what I, well, based on that, so, what, every time we do this, obviously, I'm, I'm hoping we learn something from what our employees think.
You know, a couple, a couple, just as an example, a couple, a couple of things that, that we've found based on doing these surveys is there was, there was some concerns about the level of communications within our, our departments and divisions. And so, that, that allowed us the opportunity to develop communication programs to help communicate with our employees, you know, what, what-
And so, that's-
That's an example of the kinds of things that we've been able to do.
That's what I was asking, what kind of tangible information we receive out of the, the survey that we actually implement? So, do you, do you have a kind of a running list of, and you may not unfortunately, but, because I know you, you haven't been in, in charge, but is there somewhere a running list of the tangibles that we, the responses we get back from the employees and the tangible policy items we may be changing or at least internal items that we change to respond to the survey?
We could, we could provide some of that. It's, you know, a lot of it was, like I said, was actually very valuable in, when we looked at doing strategic plans and looking at some of what our strategic initiatives were. And so, some of that, some of that data, I guess the tangibles were strategic initiatives we'd put in our, our, our strategic plans to look at things like community, employee development, communication.
Right.
So, we could probably provide you some examples of those sort of things.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, coupled, coupled with that information request, if you can kind of break that out for me, you know, in a sense where, hey, we, we did this survey, we, we found this out and we responded like this.
Sure.
Right, because, because I can tell you that I think, I think it's a great tool. You know, one of the tools to, to measure, you know, how the department is functioning. And I'm curious to see, you know, I certainly don't mind doing that if we're getting tangible results out of there to make the department better. And is that, is that really the only thing that we're doing to kind of study the internal issues? Or, or are there other things that we do as well coupled with that?
Well, as, as a department, where, I mean, we do a number of kinds, you know, data collection kinds of tools. We're doing, we'll do customer surveys. We look at, for example, on our, when, when we've done a maintenance effort, say for a sewer collection system issue, we'll do door hangers out there and look for, for public feedback. Those are just examples. So, we do a number of data collection kinds of tools. I think performance matrices are an important, important part of running an efficient business.
Right, right. And so, as, as, which provides me the, the perfect segue into my next question. So, are we, are we doing something similar and what are we doing similar to, to get feedback from the public on the service as well? So, I, I really like the fact that we do an employee satisfaction engagement survey. How do we, what are we doing regularly to kind of engage the public and get their feedback on, on our service?
We don't have, I, I, I don't have an example of a specific overarching plan we have for the, the customer service. But each of our divisions does, does efforts and, and to look at customer satisfaction. I think we can provide each of the divisions some examples.
It's a little bit different in, in that when you talk about customers and, and how we deal with the customers differently from, from each one of our divisions, customers a different, a different nature. So, our conservation section does have a, a regular outreach. We do phone calls with our customers. We do follow-up phone calls in terms of after we've had an appointment, we do a follow-up phone call to find out how they're doing, how they did. That's tracked and, and kept as part of our performance metrics. We also have a, an outreach program. As we had come to the council before, if you remember during our program management presentation, we said that we're going to be implementing a, a public outreach program as a part of that. So, our web portal for, for customer service outreach is also coming up. Plus, we've done, you know, we've done the customer outreaches we've done before and we're preparing the plans for the future customer outreaches. So, we do, do flyers, we also send out questionnaires. We've also used a couple of times this year and last year, we did focus groups to see how customers felt about rates, if you, how customers felt about its service. We've done some focus groups on what are the things that affect them in terms of the most important issues for them. And it turned out that we expected it, but we wanted to confirm that taste and odor is more, more significant to our ratepayers than any other issue when it comes to water.
Sure. And so, and so, great, Martin, thank you for that background. So, kind of like the line of question I was asking with the employee satisfaction survey. So, when we do these, we're, we're obviously getting some tangible results. Are we, are there things that we are responding to internally based off of this information?
Yes, we, we've, we've implemented stuff in the water division. I know, as Steve said, they've, they've implemented things. I think that the most, one of the best ways to see the tangible results is to look at, the, the questions were predominantly the same from year to year to year. And so, it gives you an idea and an opportunity to compare. And that was one of the reasons why it was done that way. This year, we're using a little bit different service, but the questions are pretty much shaped the same. They're also compared to national norms. So, there's the ability in terms of a performance to see how the things that we were doing or implementing, the programs, whether it was communications through our, us with our general meetings, pride committee, through some of the other things that we're doing in our division, divisions. You can now look at the metrics from year to year and compare employee satisfaction and, and track it that way too. So, that's another way to get that feedback and say, well, how successful has whatever we've been doing been in terms of addressing those needs? You can look at the, you know, what's happening to the scores.
What direction are we going?
What's that?
What direction are we going?
The last score, I think predominantly, we could say that our directions of all, we did the last one was in 2012. And all the scores in 2012, in the midst of all the turmoil, were all up from our last time in 2008. We skipped 2010. And so, we didn't do one in 2010, but all of our scores in 2012 were higher than they were in 2008.
Okay. All right, thank you. I think those are all the questions I have. Councilmember Brand covered some of the topics that, that I was going to ask as well. Thank you.
Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you. Under that same theme of employee satisfaction and engagement survey, it's on B-130. I would encourage you to ask the council staff members for their opinion on the services that's been provided by you toward us. From D4, be quite favorable. We've, we've been very responsive to us and we really appreciate that. So, include us in that survey and, and I think that would please everybody in your division. On that topic, it indicates $22,000 for hiring an outside consultant. That's at B-30, B-130. Can that be done online? I'm just trying to nickel and dime save us, but those nickels and dimes add up to dollars, so.
Yeah, the survey is done primarily to be, is intended to be done primarily online. Each employee is sent, who has an email address is sent an email with a link. And the idea is to try to do it online as much as possible. For those employees that don't have online access or an email address or just have a discomfort with doing it online, because some people just don't like to do that stuff online. We, paper, paper surveys- online, we, paper, paper surveys are made available, but the hope is the majority of it's done on an online process.
Would we really need a consultant since our questions are fairly consistent over the last five or six years?
The advantages of using a, an organization that has the expertise in this sort of thing is, is they know how to structure the questions, they know how to group the questions to, to look for the kinds of results you're looking for. It provides, by, by using the third party, it provides a level of confidentiality and a comfort level to the employees so that they're, you know, they're not having to respond directly to a manager or supervisor. So, I think that's a beneficial part of using a third party as well. And they also provide the, the, the data tools to be able to really help analyze the data. Yet, there's opportunities, I think, to do, do some of that sort of things internally and we probably have the ability to do that, but there is some real advantages to using a third party.
Very good. Under Utilities Move-In Brochure, the paragraph above that, there's $63,200 for Move-In Brochure for new utility customers. Could that be done on the website or is that on the website? So, we can direct those new customers to the website rather than do a brochure?
It'll contain a fair amount of the information that we also would, could, would want to have on our website or do have on our website, but it also provides an opportunity to outreach some of the, some of the types of things that Councilmember Baines was talking about to our customers. And so, it really, it really helps for new people coming into the community and don't have a good idea or feel for, for where to look for services. And so, it's, it's actually a program we've done historically and have had a number of them. It's just, it's time to, for a new supply and to update them.
I see the value in it. I was just trying to save the cost factor.
Also, to add to it, when we're delivering new containers or new services to a residence, they literally don't really understand what, what it is that they're getting until they really see this. This doesn't just have the division's information on it. It also gives them numbers and resources to contact other divisions for other resources as well. So, it's kind of an all, all or, all or nothing kind of guide. It gives them the other divisions who can actually help them with questions that they don't have. So, if they don't know to look to the website to find all of that, this kind of gives them that first look before it, before introducing them to the city.
Put on the refrigerator door and have a reference point for, for future questions. On the utility billing and collection, that same page, is that a paper, do we have a paperless option on that? Again, 130, top right paragraph, utility billing and collection postage, $100,000. I don't know if that's online or not, or if we can try to cut expenditures there.
You referring to the utility billing, collection, the postage and printing? Is that the?
Correct.
Yes, there is, there is options to pay by telephone or online as well.
Is there a good response from the public on that or do they like the old-school written type bill?
I'm going to let our, our utility billing collection manager answer.
Ryan Reams, Utility Billing Manager, Department of Public Utilities. Actually, the, the acceptance of doing the, there's, there's actually two payment channels that are, that are increasing every year. And surprisingly, the one that's, that's more popular than online is our, what we call our IVR, where customers can come in, punch on the telephone, pay their credit card, with a credit card over the telephone. And that's one of the reasons you see our credit card surcharge fees increasing is because of that option. It's easy, it's quick, and a lot of folks in the Fresno area are, are underserved. You know, they, they don't necessarily have a computer, but they like the ease of being able to do it, you know, without having to put a stamp on it and mail it in, so.
Very good, way to adjust to the circumstances. Nice job. One or two more questions. On page B-135, it talks about 19 new positions across multiple divisions. Do we know the total cost of that? And does that come from general fund dollars?
So, you're looking for across the department then?
Just the gross costs for those 19 new positions. And I assume, is it 19 plus one since the department director's been recently hired?
Right, so, so total cross, total cost across the department for fiscal year 15 is about $985,000.
And that's the total cost for the 19 new positions?
Yes, for fiscal year 15. For full year cost, because some of those are not budgeted for an entire year, but that's for fiscal year 15. Full year annual cost is about 1.195 million.
Thank you. And is that general fund dollars or what is it?
There are no general fund dollars in that.
I thought that was addressed at the beginning. I just want to confirm that. And on that same page, it says, we just discussed, I was going to ask some questions about the department director, but we've got that settled. So, next is a community coordinator to foster open and active communication, et cetera, for $37,300, $37,300. And if you, if I flip over to page B-33, it has that same position at $55,900. So, that total cost would be about $100,000. Can't read my writing here. So, is there, I'm not sure we need a community coordinator in public utilities. That probably should stay with staffing at the mayor's office?
That's, that's a shared position. It's actually, the position is actually, would reside in the mayor's office, but we, the Utilities Department is funding, it's, I think it's about, if I recall, it's about 40% of it to be dedicated to utilities type of issues and so.
Do we know if that person has expertise in public utilities as compared to community coordinator?
Well, what we would hope to look for is, is a, is a person that has the expertise in, in being able to provide interaction with the public, public, public communication and then ideally having some utility background is great, but, but I think it's, that those communication skills are the most important part. We can teach in the utility part if we need to.
If they have the skill set to get it across the board, across the table. Okay, so there's, so we have this particular community coordinator, then we also have a director of communications position. It seems like there's, there's two positions when one might be enough to suffice for your 35, 40% use with public utilities.
I'm going to defer to, to the city manager's office because that other position that you're referring to is in, is in another department, so.
Okay, so do we have anyone in this doing that 35, 40%?
The, the director of communications, I think that's in the mayor's office, I think is what he was.
B-135 is, is a community coordinator. I'm trying to figure out why we have two people doing what seems to be a one-person job. But we can address that later, Bruce, if you want. It's on B-33, but we can get to that when, when we get to the.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was carrying on another conversation with the assistant city manager. This position will be in some ways provide support to the communications director. The community coordinator is kind of a generic classification that's been used by other departments for communications as well as other type of activities. And as Mr. Hogg pointed out, it's a shared effort. In fact, if the department itself in its totality, if you look at not only the staff, the staffing costs for community outreach, you know, you're given the magnitude that you have three major divisions within the public utilities family, they have not only staff that supports public outreach, they also have a public relations contract with JSA and that is worth how much annually? Two?
We have to look, but yeah, it's several hundred thousand dollars.
It's several hundred thousand dollars. So, they have staff positions and then they have, what is that? Plus another half a million dollars they spend annually on an outside consulting firm who provides public relations or community outreach efforts.
Yeah, I think, I think it, recognize, I think that the, the director of communication position that currently exists is a, is a full-time position. It's a very busy person already. So, this is duties additional on top of what that person's already doing. This basically replaces, you know, the, the department previously had a, a community coordinator up that we, you know, quasi PIO kind of position. And so, we'd be looking to again pick up some of those things that, that we have not been able to do over the last several years. So, it's, I think to answer your question, it's, it's more than a, it's more than a one person's job. There's, it's, it's, we, we could keep, we could keep a person busy full-time, one person just with utilities stuff. So, I think, I think even with what we're looking at, it's going to be a pretty heavy workload with, with those bodies.
It, it might be worth developing that position just for, for you. If we've got six-figure numbers that this person can help us with, in the long run, that might be a dime's investment to get a dollar's return.
Yeah, I think, well, well, yeah, it'll definitely give us an opportunity to see how that workload goes and, and, and work with the, the manager's office and the mayor's office. And it may make sense in the future, but I think, you know, this is a good place to start.
So, it's, it's like a pilot program or a trial and error kind of?
Well, I think, yeah, it's, we've done this, we've, we've had a position doing these sort of duties in the, the past and we know that, that there's, there's opportunities that we're missing not having it. And so, I think getting started again on it, even on a, a shared basis, I think is important.
Very good. Thank you very much for your help here today. That's all I have.
Councilman Jean.
Thank you, Council President. City manager, so this is more of a public request for information. So, let me see how I can phrase this correctly. Do, does the city have a, a policy somewhere in terms of outreach when we, whether it's through public utilities or contracts that we send out, when they get the contract and that, you know, they're required to do a certain thing? Is there a policy that we have?
There's an administrative order that talks about how communications and outreach and the flow of that information. That had primarily to do, I think, with websites, but with like a lot of other things. Communication now has taken a very broad, you know, platform because we've got, we've had city departments with their own Facebook pages. Content is not being actively monitored. And so, one of the, one of the very things that the, this position in addition to our new communications director, and although this is not the communications director's primary role, that's what the other position is, is to bring all that information and back in to make sure that content is, is of such that people understand what we're trying to communicate, making sure that we're communicating across a myriad of platforms. Social media is a good example. And then also to ensure that when we are reaching out, that we are reaching out to a multitude of stakeholders, not, because there are some people, for example, who still don't get, you know, Facebook or want to do Facebook, or there's segments of the community that we need to format the information in different languages. And so, we are trying to bring that all back in to bring a more consistent manner in which communications from this organization go out to the public.
Okay. So, we do have something?
We do, but we're in the midst of, one of the assignments for the new communications directors is to kind of get a handle on what everyone has been allowed to do over the last three or four years and then revise that administrative order.
And that's going to be coming up?
Yes.
Okay. And then, in terms of follow-up and, and feedback, and I remember asking a couple of questions, even with the JSA contract and some others, when the contract is given, that there's a component in there about activities of outreach and then reporting back what those activities have been done and where the investment or where the money, dollars have been allocated to in terms of the outreach issue. I don't believe I've, I've gotten the report back on that at all in terms of it. So, I'm trying to figure out a way that when we do these type of contracts and those are the requirements, because those are the proposals that are written to, to us as, as part of their overall RFP, that there should be something in there that brings it back to the body or in a reporting manner, said, these are activities that were done, here's where, where we allocated and these are the partners that were brought into in terms of diversifying our outreach and, and our, our components. So, so I'm trying to figure out how that's going to be part of the overall RFP process and what we do here as a city and then making sure that those are accountable. So, I've, I've had some challenges in terms of trying to get that back from, from a lot of our partners that have made commitments to, to do those outreach in a manner that I think at least shows where, where those activities has occurred. So, that's why I'm asking for the request information on our general policy on that and then also if we have anything in, in, in the RFP that is specific, once they get that, that these are, you know, when you do this, this is part of your reporting material and you, you should have that as part of your overall report to, to, to the project.
So, first of all, points well taken and we can provide within the next 30 days what the work plan was included in the scope of work or in the RFP, what were the deliverables? And we can provide you what those deliverables were and what, what was achieved over the last year or two years since JSA was, provided this agreement. As far as including that with other RFPs, you're absolutely spot on. There needs to be some way to objectively measure the effectiveness and whether or not what council approved is actually being provided. And, and so, we can certainly incorporate that in future RFPs, especially when it comes to community outreach. Again, this is one of those things that our new communications director is focusing on is making sure that when we enter into these agreements, that there's some way to measure the effectiveness of, of the, the agreement.
Okay, thank you. Steven, did you want to add something?
You know, we meet with, we meet with JSA on a bi-weekly basis to discuss what their activities they have ongoing, what their progress on those are. And so, I think, as Bruce said, there's a list of deliverables in their agreement that they're required to provide, and so, we track it through those meetings. The biggest part of that actually is one of the, that they do is this, the, the utility billing insert, and so, that's done on a monthly basis.
Right. I mean, it's not just utilities, I think it's an overall stuff that we do as a city, whether that's through an RFQ process or the entity in terms of outreach and, and different parts of the community, making sure that, you know, the education piece is there for us, but there's also different tools. And so, I, I think, as I've said before, that this has been a challenging area for me to, to get that type of answer that I'm looking for, especially with the, with the investment that we have in terms of outreach and what we do with all of our different partners. And so, I just want to make sure that if, if that's what we're approving for and that's where the budget is going for, that I like to see some, some of those allocation go directly to, to the community instead of some of the generic processes that are out there and, and what, what are we holding accountable as a result of those? That's all. All right, so thank you very much. Thank you, that was it.
All right, councilmembers, the screen is clear. I think that's all we have. So, I think Dharm is up next.
All right, the next department will be the Department of the Development and Resource Management Department. Oh, okay. It's a budget presentation can be found on B-63, the beginning of it at least. I would draw your attention again to the, to the financial schedules that are located beginning on page 16. beginning on page 169. This primarily covers the many funding sources that this department has. And you can see the results that, that have come. Their overall budget is approximately $43.8 million. This is down some, this is primarily because of a decrease in the home funds that are, that are being used. You can also see on page B70, a breakout, again, by the type of fund, and you can see that this department is primarily funded by the general fund and by special revenue So going on to service impacts, which begin on page B66. This department is scheduled next year to spend $200,000 on a technology, technology development system study. I believe this has been discussed before to, to go into exactly what improvements need to be made with this department in regards to technology and systems for the expedition, expediting of development documents and development studies. Also, the Community Revitalization Division will be using $300,000 in general fund money for residential, or for citywide demolition for the city's highest priority nuisance properties. This is something that the department used to do, but due to budget cutbacks, had to scale back significantly on. There is a rather lengthy list of dangerous properties in the city that need to be addressed, and this will at least start the addressing of that problem. There is also some replacement of the ceiling tiles at the Veterans Memorial Building. That's about $10,000 for asbestos abatement and the tile ceiling replacement. There are also several grant matches that are contained within this department. This department has a rather significant number of grants that it uses to fund its operations. I won't go into each one of these, but there is the Certified Local Government Grant, which will, which will conduct a survey to review the environmental clearance of existing structures in the city's industrial zone. Also, the Prop 40, Prop 84 Sustainable Community Grant Match, those were also approved by City Council back in March. This is the match that goes with it for next year. They also have some monies reserved for credit card fees. That's an issue that has come up before and that has been discussed. This department does incur a portion of the city's credit card fees, and, and I believe that steps are being taken to address that cost. Outside legal services obviously are based on actuals, and so there is a slight increase in those. Same for the fire transition fees and for desktop replacement. That is part of the citywide program that we've been discussing over through these, through these budget hearings. There is some new equipment capital that has been budgeted. Again, like other departments, the funds are actually in the General City Purpose Department to enhance their oversight and, and review. But the use of those funds will be in this particular department primarily for parking repairs. A small amount is budgeted for some needed repairs of the parking facilities. Some is for the Gotchoks property, budgeted related to outside legal services. The records division of this department will be moving into a more secure and adequate space to ensure that those records are kept in a, in a proper manner. And also some small costs for some IT equipment, specifically for a flatbed scanner. The home funds are being reduced this year, not so much because of our allocation is being reduced, but because the carryover is being used. So that program is, is getting a little bit smaller because now we are only budgeting the, the actual entitlement that we are getting from HUD next year. The Community Revitalization Division is undertaking quite a reorganization, and that is a direct result, again, of the HUD review that was done, that was mentioned earlier in these budget hearings. There were some questions concerning the appropriateness of the split of the division's expenses between the general fund and CDBG. And so that has been addressed in this budget. But the result of that obviously is that more of the cost is now under the general fund and less over CDBG. And this is primarily because of the, the results of that review and the findings that less of their actual activity is CDBG-related and can be substantiated with CDBG funds. This is also the department that is now receiving all of the appropriations for the citywide CDBG program. It has a brand-new division in it called the HUD Division that basically handles all of the appropriations for the various programmed uses throughout the city, in parks, PD, and in this department. So even though operationally, these funds will be used by the affected departments, from a logistical standpoint, their appropriations are in this department. And you will see that identified as well within the body of the, of the budget review. As far as staffing is concerned, the department is requesting two additional GIS specialists that will be providing data analysis for land use planning and housing and revitalization and other master planning efforts. Also is the conversion of two temporary laborers to two permanent laborers. This again is due to the review of the temporary positions that we have in the city and the conversion of those positions into permanent ones. These are primarily for the tire grant that is awarded annually, and so those positions are now being made permanent. Also, there are some conversions that are taking place within the CDBG program that is primarily due to a review that, that dealt with the appropriateness of those positions and what they actually needed to be. The employee services is also increasing slightly because several positions in this department were defunded last year. Again, that's part of the whole city program that was done. Those are now being refunded and, and actually funded this year completely in the DARM budget. There are also, in addition to the CDBG program dollars that are being transferred here, all of the positions that were funded by CDBG or can be funded by CDBG are now in that HUD Division. And so there are several positions that are moving. It's not so much that, that one division is losing positions, it's just because of this unique funding source, they have to be in one place to be able to be tracked and to be able to be reported upon to HUD in a manner in which is approved of by that, by, by the feds. Also, there are some additional transfers that are being made, the staff realigning to the work actually being performed. Some of the positions are being moved out of the Sustainability Division. That division's funding sources are, are becoming a little bit less, and so those are also being moved into the general fund to continue some of their work, in addition to some mechanical consultants, some engineers, and some also some project managers and architects. So some of the positions are being moved around to more properly align them to the duties that they actually do and the individuals that they actually report to. So I believe that that pretty much encompasses an overview of this department's budget. I believe the director is available to answer any of your questions.
Awesome, thank you, Jane. Are there any members of the public that would like to address DARM and their presentation this morning? All right then, Councilman Baines.
Thanks, Council President. So just, there's a lot going on in this department for sure, in DARM. So I have a couple, couple of questions, and they'll kind of, they'll kind of go from, between obviously DARM and, I mean, all over DARM, so. So kind of, I was reading through this, and we have, it looks like a HUD program reorganization where we're going to have a HUD unit. Kind of give me some more background on that. How'd that, how'd that happen, and how's that ending up under, under DARM?
Absolutely. Jennifer Clark, DARM Director. So for this particular budget, we really wanted to address all of the concerns that were raised on, through our monitoring visit from a couple of years ago. So HUD is really looking for very strong and robust fiscal management. So the reorganization is really more of a fiscal reorganization and realignment of the, the budget, budgeted funds rather than the, the people. There are a couple of small movement of personnel as well. But really what HUD's looking for is how do we manage and how do we appropriately have checks and balances as it relates to programs? And so what we are, are looking to do is to ensure that all of our programs that we provide to the public, that there is a review of all of those expenditures in a separate and, and contained division within the, the DARM fund organization. So that's, that's the main purpose, is to ensure that checks and balances are available for the programs and so that as we move forward with our HUD programs, we can show the benefit to the community.
Okay, so did, so is HUD recommending that we place this unit inside of DARM?
They are recommending that it is in a isolated fund, and because of the, the skill set that we have within the department to review and determine eligibility of programs, it made the most sense to put it in the DARM organization.
Now, is this, is this unit going to kind of, is going to have its own manager, director? How's it going to be organized?
The housing manager will handle all of the housing-related programs that are HUD-funded. So CDBG, ESG, home, NSP, the LED program, some of the state programs as well, will all be housed under the, the housing manager. And they'll be able to ensure that we're, we're meeting our programmatic requirements for each of those.
Okay, so, so the housing, the housing manager is going to oversee the HUD unit?
Correct.
Okay. So is the HUD unit, because, because you mentioned the HUD having, HUD unit being isolated, it's going to have its own separate budget and how's, I'm just worried, I'm thinking about fiscally, how's that going to look? Because you mentioned that it needed to be isolated, but at the same time, with it being in DARM, how's that going to work?
So it, it's actually its own account. So like an enterprise fund, it's an account, it happens to be within our organizational structure. But as long as we aren't funding other programs or other positions out of that account, so think of it as a, as a checkbook. So it's that one checking account. So as we draw down and we pay out, those are only HUD-eligible activities within that account.
And the housing manager is going to be the one that's going to ensure that all the drawdowns are appropriate under HUD?
Right. Obviously, we'll have checks and balances within the, within the department. So the, the person who reviews for eligibility is someone different who reviews for fiscal compliance, and then supervisors and managers will be able to approve draws.
Okay. And, and that kind of leads me into one of the other questions I had, kind of a segue. Where are we with the housing manager position? So now, I know for sure, and this is now at least my second budget, and it may be my third, where I've asked for a housing manager position, and I see that we're making, we're hiring in other places, but we, we still don't have a housing manager. And let me, for a brief moment, editorialize. The reason why this is a, a big deal to me is because of the monitoring letter we received from HUD, you know, some two and a half, three years ago. And, and we, in my opinion, we haven't responded to this as of yet. You know, so I'm glad that, you know, we are, we are obviously going to have a HUD unit. I think that's appropriate. But I'm not exactly sure why it's taking this long for us to have a, a housing manager. So we're going to, you know, where are we at with that recruitment? When can this body expect to see, the city expect to see a housing manager?
Absolutely, and, and that's a great question. So two responses. We did a recruitment. We were looking for a lot of skill sets. We did not find an individual that had all of the skill sets that we needed. We've kind of pared that back a little bit to really focus on the federal programs themselves. And we will be going back out for recruitment this summer and hope to have someone on staff in the fall. One of the things that we were doing in response to the monitoring findings is, is getting back to HUD and saying, here's the, the description of what we're looking for. Is that really what, what you want? So we're, we're wanting to make sure that we fill a position that they feel like is the adequate and appropriate. And we haven't received complete response on that yet, but we hope to have a complete response in, in July from HUD on all of our, all of our information that we've sent to them.
So, okay, so we, we recruited, I think I do remember hearing that we recruited, and when we first recruited, we didn't ask HUD if this is the type of person we should have over our, as a housing manager?
It was part of our package that we sent to them. They have not responded entirely to that package.
No, I mean, the first recruitment? Because now we're on the second recruitment, okay.
That was, right, right.
Okay.
We were hoping that we had had that back, but we didn't have it back yet from them.
Okay, so we developed, we kind of developed a recruitment, and then we went out, we didn't find the person with the, the skill sets we needed, so we've now revised that?
Correct, correct. So we hope to be going back out this summer and have someone hired this fall. I think with a more, with a narrower skill set, really looking, focusing on the federal programs and administration of the federal programs, we will have better success in being able to, to hire someone in that position.
What were we looking for that we couldn't find in the initial recruitment?
A combination of someone who can actually leverage the federal funds with other programs and be able to provide those services, understanding of some of the other programs that are available, low-income housing tax credits, new market tax credits, other programs. Most people who are administering federal programs have, have a knowledge of those, but not necessarily the ability to provide those, that information to an applicant who comes in the door, to be able to walk them through those programs. So we really wanted someone who could actually leverage those other programs rather than just administer our, our internal programs.
Right, okay. And that makes sense, and I, and I can, okay, so now I know that what we were looking for, well, I can, I know why we didn't find that. That's, that's a very difficult skill.
To be able to do both is, is a, is a big, big ask.
Yeah, that's a, in the, in the, in the public sector, I may only know one or two people in the whole city of, you know, the city of Fresno that, that has that capability. And even in the private sector, to have the ability to understand, to understand that is difficult. So I think it's, I think it was appropriate to scale that back because it's possible. I don't know if we, you know, I can certainly appreciate the need to be able to leverage, you know, tax credits with, you know, the, the home funding, HUD funding, and all of the various programs. We may be able to consult for that, and, you know, to, to, to help, to help us understand that, because that's a, that is a very specific skill set that's probably difficult to find in the country. And it sounds like we did have a hard time finding it. Because I, and, and the only reason I'm hanging here for a moment is because, you know, we had a very serious issue before you came, Jennifer, with, you know, with our activities out of the Housing Department. And really, while I can appreciate, we wanted that really broad skill set. I don't necessarily know that's what we need to keep us out of trouble, right? I mean, you know, we need someone that, that can administer the programs and make sure that we don't get in trouble for that. So, and I'm, I'm hoping in, in short order, you now assured me on the record that we're going to have somebody in the fall. I certainly hope to see that because I'm concerned that we need someone overseeing that that understands. And even that, knowing how those programs fit together, is a, is a relatively nuanced skill. That's not, that's not anything that you can just go pick some, somebody off the street and be able to do. How much do we owe HUD right now?
We have requested HUD to, again, we've sent off a number of packages. Two HUD are waiting for their confirmed response, that we have cleared the entire monitoring. We have our, their assurances that that clearance will, will come soon. Part of that is adopting this budget and, and moving those HUD programs into an isolated checking account to ensure that we have these checks and balances. Once they know that that's moving forward, we understand that they'll be able to, to clear all of, all of the outstanding issues, and that includes our repayment for activities. We have budgeted in this particular budget and anticipated $500,000. We believe it will be less than that. And when, when we receive confirmation, we'll be able to come back with an additional appropriations resolution for the council for, for other eligible activities. But right now, we have a placeholder of $500,000.
So we don't, we don't really know how much we owe HUD?
We believe it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $348,000, but we have a placeholder just to, to make sure that there aren't any additional, we, we don't want to commit to a specific program to the public and not be able to deliver because we have to pull back some of those funds. So we have a placeholder of $500,000.
And, and help me understand why we don't know how much? And help me understand why we don't know how much we owe them?
So they haven't confirmed that our accounting for our eligible activities and ineligible activities, that they agree. So we've sent them what, based on our review of the programs, what we believe to be the repayment, they have to confirm.
Okay, we think, so we think the number's 348?
We believe that the number, that's the number that we have sent them with our accounting, and they have not confirmed if that is, if they agree with us or not.
Okay, how long have we been waiting on, waiting on that from HUD?
They, the San Francisco office was, has been delayed because of their closure last fall. So we sent off packages in October, December, and January to complete all of the packages that they anticipated. We have not received a confirmation on whether or not those packages are adequate at this time.
Okay, and so we don't have, so we think it's about 348, we set aside a half a million dollars, and what, so obviously, if we don't know a direct number, we don't even know what the repayment plan is yet then, right?
Correct, we anticipate paying it out in this one budget year, just a reduction in the amount of money that we would bring in from the federal funds, so that we don't have to have an ongoing recurring payment. We do have in home, one more year left in our repayment on the home programs, but on CDBG, we're waiting for that confirmation. We'd like to do it in one year rather than pay it out over a series of years.
Okay, okay, and I think that kinda speaks to, you know, my other issue, is just having, I think if we had a housing manager, we'd have, we'd have, you know, a person that was following that up, tracking that down, and someone we could hold accountable for that right now, because obviously, we need these questions answered. I mean, it's been kinda looming out there for a long time. When do we need to update our housing element?
Housing element actually will be updated in this coming year. We have been working with the Council of Governments to assign the numbers within the region, we have been attending those meetings on a regular basis, they will be coming out with draft and then public notice on those numbers, as soon as those are confirmed, then we can begin our housing element. What's nice about this year is it lines up very closely with our consolidated plan, which is required for all of the federal programs, to show how they link together and how there's a continuum of resources. So we'll actually be doing those in concert this year.
Okay, I'm gonna switch gears for a moment and ask Bruce a question, because Bruce, we, I know, but Bruce, you know, we talked about this yesterday, and I think Jane brought it up for a moment, about the $140,000 in the credit card fees we have budgeted in the DARM budget this year. So, you know, we had a pretty good discussion yesterday, I think, about it, and you're pretty certain that we're gonna solve this issue in short order?
I think my quote yesterday is, you can take that to the bank, so yes.
Well, good, we can take that to the bank, so let me, I wanna know if we can, since we can take it in the bank, can we take that 140 out the budget and use it someplace else? Because if we're gonna get this issue solved, why do we have the $140,000 in additional fees still in the budget?
Let me spend some time with Jennifer and see maybe, and I'll work with, certainly just see attorney, on whether or not maybe we can come back with a policy that says that we will not accept credit cards for any transactions exceeding X amount of dollars. So until we, you know, because we have, interestingly enough, now I've got the Public Utilities Department now telling me that they don't like paying these fees either, although their previous position was is that it was the cost of operating. So this conversation around credit cards is now spurring other voices in my head other than the other ones that get me in trouble. So let me sit down with Jennifer and with the attorney's office and find out from an operational, from an impact, what kinda impact such a policy would create for not just for DARM but for Public Works, and then we'll get back to you maybe in a week before we conclude budget discussions?
Okay.
With potentially a short-term fix until we get the software issue addressed.
That sounds fine, and yeah, if you can get back to me before budget's over, because I do trust you and believe you, and so if that's the case, we can, we maybe will do something different with that, with those fees that we've allocated for that. All right, thanks Bruce. Kind of, and like I said, I have a couple, it's a big department, DARM is, so I apologize for the range of questions, but, so I see we have on B67, we have, which I think is a great thing, by the way, we have, we wanna, we wanna purchase a flatbed scanner that looks like it's going to be able to have pretty, a big bang for our buck, basically. So I'm just wondering, because I see right above that, we're moving our, the records move, you know, $50,000 is included in the department's budget to move the DARM's records function. So is there any way we can, because we're buying the flatbed scanner, is there any way we can save that $50,000 and use the flatbed scanner to accomplish that task?
It will take the better portion of a year to take all of our records and put them into digital format. We also have some historical records that cannot be put in digital record form, so when you consolidate all of the building plans that are required to be held for state records retention, as well as all of the planning records, historic preservation records, and you consolidate them into one secure location, and I appreciate what you're trying to do in terms of getting better bang for the buck. We believe that this is the most secure and the most viable and efficient use of the resources to consolidate them in one location with personnel who are trained to deal solely with records retention and to ensure that those records don't walk out the door and are kept in a location that we can find them. It's been actually a really great tool for developers, for individual property owners, they come into our department to research their property, but they're in three or four locations and the information is hard for them to get. If we have it in one single source location, it will be much more, much easier for the public to access, but it will also be more secure for the city to maintain those records. So, you know, the, this is actually a fairly conservative figure, we really feel like we can make this move and consolidate all of those records, but there are significant number, I couldn't even hazard a guess as to the number of records that we need to put into the one location.
Okay, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause some of my questioning here, I have, you know, a few more questions, but I see I have other council colleagues punched up the talk, and maybe they will ask some of the questions that I have, and I wanna give somebody else some time, so I'm gonna see now, Council President, with the, reserving the option to come back for a few more.
Thank you, Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. In reading over the DARM information on A17, it indicates that the CRD will move away from issuing code violations that are unaffordable in low and moderate income neighborhoods to a more holistic effort. So what, do you need a moment to look at that?
Yep, got it.
Okay. It seems to me that we need to enforce that code more evenly and fairly, and that indicates that we'll not be doing that. And I think the motivation for that was to encourage collaborative efforts. But in my experience, when you issue a code violation, collaboration becomes at the forefront, as opposed to trying to collaborative work with people, it gets going on and on and on. So it doesn't, number one, it doesn't seem fair, number two, it doesn't seem effective, and I don't know who's gonna make that call, what moderate income neighborhood is fined or cited and is not. So I don't, I hope we don't get in a situation where we're not practicing cost recovery fairly, and that means using the richer part of town, if you will, to finance or cost recover versus the other areas of town that get away with it. So that's very disturbing to me. I like a little fair play, and I think applying the rules equally across the board is much more helpful to the community and especially on cost recovery, so just a note there. Looking at...
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
Just for a moment? So as, again, as we talked a little bit about the HUD requirements for what can we, what are eligible activities? So traditional code enforcement, citation, monitoring, repayment by the property owner is not an eligible activity. So what is an eligible activity is working with neighborhoods to find a better way to solve their code enforcement issues or their blight issues within their neighborhood. So a very small segment of the program will be paid for with CDBG and will be focused on that holistic effort. The majority of the program, which is being requested through the general fund this year, which is probably the biggest change within our general fund request, will be community revitalization that focuses on going out and assessing the problem, giving the property owner the due process to resolve the problem, and then making the citation. So that can't be paid for by the federal funds, so that's why we're separating those two. So a small function will be federally funded in the holistic effort, but the majority will be what you just said in terms of making people accountable for what occurs on their property.
I think it would be more effective to, that small portion, to me, would take too much time and effort and energy for what it would produce as opposed to the traditional way of getting our community up to speed with these violations and problems. So I don't think I agree with that, just for the record, and I think the community reflects some of the inability to fairly apply these rules across the board, so maybe I'm a little bit tough or hardcore, but I've seen results in my district, and I think that's what we need to encourage. I appreciate the effort, but I think collaboration is part of the process and can be encouraged. But again, when you get that citation, that's when movement becomes very, very hyper, which we need. Looking at page B67, under Grants, bottom-left column, very, very encouraging, twenty, over $23 million in grants, great job. I assume that's up from 2013, '14, and hopefully will be up in 2015.
We will continue to pursue grant funding as much as possible.
Yeah, that's excellent, good job on that. And then under, the next column, it says Community Revitalization General Fund, and it indicates there'd be a staff of 37 positions. I believe we currently have 28 positions. I'm just curious where the additional eight position or people will come from, do we have any, what's the process?
The 28 is field positions. Actually, there are 35 field positions right now, 28 in this proposed budget, 34 and 28. But the field positions are those who are out in the field, who are actually going out and doing the work. The entire department also includes those who set up the appointments, who monitor the fines as they're collected, who provide the packets to the, to our hearing officer, who conduct the administrative activities within the division. So it's, the field personnel is different from the actual entire division budget.
So how many field personnel do we actually have?
We currently have 28 field personnel.
And we have budget for 35 field personnel?
We have, we have a couple of open supervisor positions that we've interim filled with specialists that we intend to open for recruitment this summer.
So what will our total field positions be in the rest of this year or next year?
So the entire field positions for community revitalization, remember, there's two, there's CDBG funded as well as the city funded, so the number will remain the same, but there will be three supervisor positions that will be filled. So they can also double in the field, so that would be up to 31 field personnel.
I would encourage additional field personnel. Again, in my district, that works, especially Eldorado Park and the areas that we've been doing great work, your department's done great work there, and it's really made a difference. So it seems the field reps would be a nice investment from my perspective in the future. Let me check one more thing. Oh. There was another paragraph I saw, but I can't, here it is, on B71, conversions. Can you clarify that for me? I couldn't track that, I couldn't connect the dots with realignment and reclassification and...
Sure.
Ups and downs and all arounds, and I know it costs $355,000, but how is all that, I don't understand that, could you?
So in the separating of the two divisions, or the two funding sources for community revitalization, there will be an addition of three personnel for supervisors, which are the defunded positions, so ensuring that we have supervisors that are funded within that division, as well as three community outreach specialists within the HUD-funded portion of the division. Their focus will be outreach to the business community, where the intent is to start along Blackstone and the Kings Canyon-Ventura corridors to provide the same level of services that we do within our outreach to our targeted neighborhoods, but specifically to small business owners who may or may not know how to access the services within City Hall, and to provide them with opportunities to form business associations so that they have control and they have more understanding and of what's going on around them in terms of zoning and kinds of uses, and how they can get involved in ensuring that their property values are maintained.
I think that helped me. The, so what do you think would be the net effect or impact on our city with this conversion process? What's the long-term goal, the short-term goal from the realignment, reclassification, et cetera?
I think the long-term goal is to get, just what you talked about, was more boots on the ground, to ensure that there are more people out there interfacing with the public, whether it's writing a citation or providing them how to get in contact with city services, to ensure that we protect the property values of our property owners, we preserve neighborhood quality, whether it's a business neighborhood or residential neighborhood, and that we're promoting investment within our community. So long-term impact is to have a better interface with the public, to get compliance and to have a really great place to live.
And our short-term impact?
Our short-term impact is just getting the information out there on the street. Actually, I think one of the things that came up in Business Friendly Fresno is a lot of small businesses don't know how to come in and apply for different kinds of permits, don't know when it's necessary, don't know how that impacts them, so getting that information out and providing that value add.
The, and then on the transfer paragraph, again, there's a lot of realignment. Why are we transferring into the playing division, the project managers or architects, et cetera, et cetera? Is there a purpose, long-term purpose, short-term purpose for that?
So this year, our development services applications dramatically began to increase. During the recession, we had outsourced a fairly large number of personnel, about eight persons, out to other divisions within the department, as well as out to other departments. We've gradually been moving them back into the building services division, so those are direct services to developers, builders, tradespeople, residents in the community to actually be able to process permits when they're, when they come in and they ask for, when we need a plan reviewed or a permit approved.
Will that, the portion of the city that they're transferred from, will that department portion, division suffer from the transfer, or is there some...
Two came back last September from Public Utilities. They're plans examiners, they've moved back in, transitioned back in. Those additional services were picked up in Business Friendly Fresno, the additional personnel for plans examination, that those were added back in, so there's no impact to those. The other, the remaining individuals are coming from our sustainability division. We have a public-private partnership with PG&E to do home energy tune-up and business energy tune-up. We also have contracts out in the field to provide those services. We also have contracts out in the field to provide those services directly to areas outside the city limits of Fresno, as well as for our business partners. We can continue to provide those services through those contracts, and then our personnel can go back to their home organization to do the types of activities that they came to the city to work for. They got to do something fun for a little while, and now they're going back to their traditional activities, and the majority, all of them have stated that they are happy to go back to where they were and really are excited to get back into the building field, and so there's no impact to the public.
And finally, I don't know that we need to be advised, but the council wasn't included in this reorganization, and I know myself and a couple other council members have made numerous requests to be part of, have input at least, and be part of the code reorganization. So is there any timeframe that we're going to be involved?
Absolutely. So what we would like to do this summer is to conduct a workshop to discuss with each of the council members and as a whole, what are the priorities within your districts, and how can we prioritize those for code activities within our community? We are really looking forward to that. This organization is a fiscal reorganization to ensure compliance with the federal regulations. So in terms of actual types of code cases that occur within your, within your districts, and what are the priorities to preserve those property values that we just talked about, we want to come back and have that workshop later this summer, and we would really appreciate some input as to what is, what are the most important and pressing activities as it relates to code, so that we can make sure that we align our resources appropriately. It may mean that we come back and we say, hey, we need additional resources to put technology in the field, to put tablets in the field, but that's going to be after a conversation with the council regarding that.
I think we'd also like to be involved with the actual encouragement of hiring new code people and getting them more directly involved, so we can have a relationship with them as well as understanding our problems and priorities. But I think it's a total concept that we need to work on, so we can be most effective, you know, for the city and for our district, so I look forward to that. FYI, I'll be on vacation July 19th to August 9th in Montana, so if you could schedule around that, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you for your information.
Councilman Brand.
Well, a lot of questions have already been asked by my council colleagues, good questions, good answers. Just a few things. On the parking service, that was supposed to be on RFP, what is the status of that right now?
There was an RFP issued for parking services. It is still in review, and a recommendation will be coming back in the next 60 days.
Okay, so it's still going ahead, delayed?
Absolutely, right.
Okay.
Due diligence.
And on home fund, it said we have $5.1 million. If we survive the HUD audit, and these are, we've paid back our, the loans we talked about two years ago?
Right, so we have one more year of repayment for the home program. So the federal funds are allocated on an annual basis, on a formula basis. CDBG Home, ESG, HAPWA are all federally funded programs that are provided. So our home program does have an additional year of repayment. Sometimes the appropriations don't exactly line up with the amount of the formula, because it's what you, we actually are incurring and asking the council to expend through a contract. So if we have additional contracted projects within this fiscal year, we'll be able to come back with an appropriation and a contract for a specific project. So you have direct input and control over exactly how those funds are spent.
Okay. And the new HUD division is 19 people, and who is the director?
So there will actually be two managers within that division, the housing manager, which is what we just discussed, as well as a community revitalization manager, who will be focused directly on those targeted neighborhood investments. So the building neighborhood capacities neighborhoods, so there are two current and one new that will be coming online, so El Dorado Park, Southwest Fresno, the new one will be the Yokomi neighborhood coming online, as well as the targeted area in Southeast Fresno that was identified last fall, and we talked about our targeted rehabilitation program.
Okay, and this is for the city manager, because you weren't here, but I believe two years ago, we transitioned from the enterprise department to a general fund department. How's that transition went?
Well, I mean, I think, I think as far as the transition goes, it's completed, and now that the difference is that there is no, no reserve or deficit related to the department, it is accounted for, just like any other general fund.
And in fact, hopefully this year, we will pay off the final debt that we carried over from the old enterprise department, correct?
That's correct, we plan to do that by June 30th.
Okay, good, so, that's good. I saw the NSP program is winding down, with about $500,000 left. Is there any other opportunities for that?
We're not seeing any. The first was allocated in HIRA, and the second in ERA, which were both Recovery Act programs. We anticipate getting some repayment through program income that we can continue to utilize as if it was CDBG funds, so, but we do, we're not seeing on the horizon any new allocations of NSP funding.
Okay. And then finally, this is kind of a curiosity, when I started in 2009, there was a lot of fanfare on the DCR Downtown, Community Revitalization Department, that I believe it took about two years to eventually absorb into DARM, is that correct? Okay. I know some of the people are here, so these people, just a few of them are no longer here, other ones are just taking over in different divisions of DARM.
Right, so we are still focused on revitalization, but citywide, not just in downtown, while downtown is a priority. It's not the only place that we're conducting revitalization activities. So the individuals who remain have been absorbed and based on their skill set to do specific activities as it relates to management of projects or programs.
So is there anyone in DARM that has a specific charge of downtown, or just basically this is a departmental effort?
It's a departmental effort.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Quintero, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jennifer, just been listening to a lot of the changes that you're making, and it just sounds like you have, like you're moving three people over here with one supervisor, five people over here with one supervisor, and it's kind of sounding like it's getting top-heavy with managers for just two or three people. I mean...
So the CDBG community revitalization team will have one manager, one supervisor, three community revitalization specialists, and three community outreach coordinators. So that particular division will have a multitude of personnel doing various activities as it relates specifically to the CDBG programs.
Yeah, it's just sounding pretty top-heavy. Can we get a list of, you know, you have a manager for this, and how many people are underneath that?
Right.
It just, it just seems top-heavy with management to me. And then another part is that in code, our, you know, the services are limited, and you're listing that, I guess the question is, you're having one supervisor and three specialists go to the community revitalization, CDBG part, how's that going to affect the services that you're currently providing in code?
We anticipate that there will be some very positive benefits in code, because they'll be able to focus on areas with high code concentration, code activity concentrations. So those teams, that team will be really focusing on specifically those targeted neighborhoods that were identified last fall for rehabilitation. The additional, or the remaining staff will be able to focus on traditional code enforcement activities, being able to respond directly to customer complaints and concerns, and be able to process those activities. Last year, in the fiscal year 2013, we, in a 12-month period, we had 9,000 cases opened and 8,900 closed. In this current fiscal year, year-to-date, which is 11 months and one week, we've had 9,200 cases opened and 93, nearly 9,400 cases closed. So we're actually upticking in terms of our ability to process cases. The most important resource that we can provide for our staff right now is ensuring that we have very good priorities as to what the most important things are to address citywide, and then coming back after we have our workshop and understanding what those additional resources are, whether it's technology in the field, so we don't have to come back into, into the office and rekey in our inspections.
Okay, how many, how many code enforcement folks do you have currently that are specialists that go out into the neighborhoods and do code?
28.
Okay, you have 28. And now you're saying that you're, you've got some targeted neighborhoods for revitalization, and so what we're going back, and how many of those are going to be assigned to just those neighborhoods?
Three.
Three. How many neighborhoods is that going to be?
There are the, the two building neighborhood capacities neighborhoods, specifically, that are existing, the new building neighborhoods capacity area, and then the additional targeted area in Southeast Fresno that was identified last fall in our targeted rehab programs. Additionally...
And what area is that in Southeast?
It is just south of Kings Canyon, just to the, trying to think of the North-South Street, I'm blanking right now. We'll get that information for you.
Okay.
There was a map last fall.
Okay. Because it just seems like, you know, you're taking code enforcement people into one neighborhood, and we're, to me, it's kind of getting back to the老 Jefferson deal, where, you know, we were limited with code enforcement, and then they were just assigned to that, and so the rest of the city, or that needed services, to some degree suffered because they were concentrating on that, and it just, you know, didn't, didn't seem right. The, the other thing is also is that the concern, and that's been going on for quite a while, is we have no weekend code enforcement, and we have folks that, I guess by city ordinance, are allowed, what, two or three yard sales a year, and you're having, you're having folks in neighborhoods that have one every single day, and some of them are even going into properties that are abandoned and setting up yard sales there, or even on, on street corners. And, and there's no, there's no code enforcement folks, and then you have the, the folks that own restaurants, that primarily will make their money on weekends, and they're paying overhead and everything, and then you've got these, the taco trucks, food trucks...
Mobile vendors, right.
The mobile vendors go and set up shop on, and even on properties. They're paying the property owner, but they're setting up shop, and
Right.
There's no license, there's a health issue, and it's every weekend. And I mean, I mean, they're getting pretty elaborate now.
Yeah. And, and obviously identifying, again, those priority actions, we've had really good luck this spring pulling together a team just to focus on weeds. Obviously, with the drought and the high fire risk, it was really critically important that we went out and addressed weeds. We pulled together a team, said, this is your focus for four months, they've gone out, they've done, we will be completely clear by July. Then we can, you continue to use that model for these kinds of high priority activities that with a concentrated effort, we can really make a, make a big difference. And that's one of the things, we'd really like the feedback in a workshop, is to ensure that we're hitting those priority areas, we understand the resources that are needed for that specific topic, whether it's mobile vendors, or illegal signs, or additional, or zoning activities, to make sure that we're addressing those. And with a concentrated team who can go out and do that over a short period of time, will have really dramatic impact in, in the neighborhoods.
Because you're also, you also mentioned about having, I guess, a team of folks go out to existing businesses and telling them what kind of services the city has, and what the city, how the city can help them, and who to call, and this and that. I prefer them being out there on weekends and, and being as code enforcement people to get rid of those businesses, because that's the complaints that we get, is that, you know, I've got a restaurant, and here this guy comes and sets up, and the city's losing money to a large degree as well, you know, rather than knowing what the services are. I mean, the Ventura Kings Canyon quarter, we got a business association, and we work pretty close with them, in fact, there's two of them there that, that we work with, and I, you know, they, they need information, they can call us, or we just stop by and visit with them, or whatever. And, you know, yet we have some, we had that coffee company that set up shop there and was smelling up the entire place when they were roasting the entire neighborhood, and they're saying, oh, we didn't know we needed a CUP. Duh, you know? So, I mean, you know, things like that, I mean, it's just, it just seems like there's a lot of top-heavy management, and plus, a lot of setting up these little things to go out to, to let people know, to feel good about, you have your business here, you know? It just seems that it could be better utilized, and then you also mentioned on, on the, and then even a lot of those that are out, that do those flower vendors, they know that codes comes in at 4:00 or whatever, and they set up after that. And we had one fellow that opened up a flower shop that actually got threatened by the guy that has these, these vendors on the street corner, said, if you, if you, you know, you better shut down, because we're going to close you down. And they went and broke his windows and stuff like that, and it just, there was nothing, nothing that could be done. And, so I mean, it just, it just, moving on then to measure A on the abandoned vehicle abatement, how's that going to affect code enforcement, the budget?
So we currently have a really great program where we can go out and we can receive repayment or reimbursement for removing vehicles from the road. So there will still be a small amount of state funds, but we have not completely assessed that in, in relationship to this budget as to how it will impact our revenues.
Okay, so you're not sure yet what
Right.
What the cost is going to be to the city?
Right, right.
And then if you can give me that neighborhood that you're going to prioritize in Southeast?
Mm-hmm. We'll get that map today.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yep.
Councilman Baines.
Okay, so thanks, I got a few other my questions answered by my colleagues, but one I wanted to follow, continue down the line, a question that Councilmember Quintero had about the weekend
Right.
Code. Is there a reason we don't have weekend code enforcement?
Currently, we can assign personnel, we just need to have an opportunity to discuss with, with the personnel how we would do assignments, we just can't do it overnight. So planning that ahead and knowing that that's something that we're going to do, currently supervisors or interim supervisors will go out on the weekend if we have a special need or a special call, but we just need to plan ahead for that and to know, build it into the work schedule.
So, okay, let me, let me see if I can, can we have a permanent weekend, can we have permanent weekend code presence?
I, I think we can, it's, we're just going to have to have a conversation with the labor about
Then I, then I'd like to make a motion that we have permanent weekend code presence in the city of Fresno.
Sure.
So some of the, some of the questions that I had about code were answered, but I want to kind of continue on the new, the new code and community revitalization function. So I see that we have, we're going to be targeting some neighborhoods, you mentioned what those neighborhoods are. How are we going to, is there a plan in place to work with the council offices as we target How are we going to, is there a plan in place to work with the council offices as we target, as you all decide what neighborhoods you're going to target and work with those neighborhoods?
Absolutely. We'll be able to sit down, once the budget is adopted, sit down with the district offices to understand what your priority needs are within those neighborhoods. They obviously have to be within CDBG eligible target areas. Different districts have different placement of those areas, but absolutely, we will sit down and understand what those priorities are and how we can best deploy our resources.
And which neighborhoods are those, again, that you're targeting?
So, the two BNCP current neighborhoods, so Eldorado Park, Southwest Fresno, the new one, which is in Yakomi, which we have applied for, and my understanding is it's coming online this fall, as well as the targeted neighborhood that was identified for neighborhood rehabilitation funds last fall as part of the council action and directing activity toward those targeted neighborhoods in southeast Fresno.
Okay.
But additionally, we do want to continue to provide services specifically to CDBG eligible activities and areas, and those are all across the city. There are eligible neighborhoods throughout Fresno, and it's critically important that we understand the needs of each council district for those neighborhoods, and we would like to provide targeted neighborhood assistance within each of those areas, whether it's a voluntary code cleanup in each district, or if it's specifically code enforcement outreach within those targeted neighborhoods. But again, the CDBG funds can only be spent in those CDBG eligible target areas. So, we need to meet with each of the districts to understand exactly what those priorities are within those geographic areas.
Okay. And Howard, you know, before I forget, I wanted to also follow up on Councilmember Capriolio's comment, because we did, we had a lot of discussion last year this time. You were new, but we did have a pretty healthy discussion last time about forming a council subcommittee to help with the reorganization of code, and it seems like some activities are happening, and I know you characterize it as just a fiscal reorganization, but there does seem to also be a qualitative reorganization too, as far as the work that's happening. So, we're going to form our council subcommittee. Counsel, I'm going to request that we form that subcommittee and begin. Council President, if you could, at your leisure, direct which council members you'd like to make up that committee, and then we're going to just begin working with you on the reorganization, because it's probably time now. There's activity that's happening. Councilmember Capriolio is absolutely correct, and it's probably time now, before we get too far down the road. Obviously, we're talking about weekend enforcement. We're making motions about that. We have now a code unit, a kind of a community revitalization unit, so things are happening, and I know this council wants to be involved in that. Code is an extremely important function, and we want to have input. So, with your indulgence, Council President, when you get an opportunity, you could-
Absolutely. Let me ask City Manager Rudd, if last year, right through this process, the mayor talked about creating two committees. One was, one turned into Business Friendly Fresno, and then one was to do this exact thing that Councilman Baines and Councilman Capriolio are talking about. So, before we convene our own committee, is there still, is the mayor still interested in convening a big committee about code, or should we just handle it here and then?
We had this discussion. Quite honestly, it's just turned into bandwidth over the last year. You know, Jennifer just is new. We had the issues with HUD we had to deal with. We had the Business Friendly Fresno that we were dealing with. We had this other thing called the General Plan Update. There's just a myriad of things going on all at the same time, but we are committed, as Jennifer said, to that workshop after we pass budget, and then convening a meeting, or convening a subcommittee to work on this particular issue.
So, maybe you and I could meet prior to the workshop about that subcommittee, so that the day that we hold that workshop in the near future, council will be able to name the members that we want on the subcommittee, and we'll be able to hit the ground running on that.
We can do that.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Awesome.
So, thanks for bringing that up, Councilmember Capriolio. Appreciate that. So, how, kind of back to the community revitalization unit, how specifically are they going to address blight removal? What's the idea behind that?
There are a number of ways. One is to take the models that are already working in BNCP, to work with the neighborhoods, to create some capacity, to ensure that we're addressing the needs of those neighborhoods. And then to direct, we have some very specific funds targeted for road repair, for infrastructure repair, to work with the district and the neighborhoods to say, "Hey, here are places where if we could improve the roadway, or the sidewalks, or the infrastructure, then there would be sufficient value increase in the neighborhood to start making it worthwhile for investments to occur, and to be able to remove trash, to be able to remove weeds, to be able to remove abandoned buildings." Some of those things that we haven't done recently, just because we haven't had the funding available.
Okay. No, that's good. And can you, and this is going to be an information request, an ongoing one, can you at least, whether in the trade memo or report to council, just give us maybe a quarterly or semi-annually update on kind of what the activities are around the community revitalization unit? I don't want it to be anything where you have to come present to council, so it can be something in a trade memo where at least we know what activities are happening, you know, the full council does, because I know they're targeted neighborhoods, but it'd be good for all of us to know what's happening in a variety of neighborhoods. And I'm a little bit with Councilmember Quintero on some of the top heaviness, it seems. So, for the new community revitalization unit, do we need a supervisor and a manager?
And that could be worked out in the workshop specifically, but we felt that it was necessary to be able to have, maintain some of the code enforcement abilities of the Community Revitalization Division, that they actually had the ability to write citations. Like you said, sometimes that's the only way to get collaboration, but to be able to have one of the supervisors, along with the specialists, to be able to respond to those concerns and complaints in the field. And then that was a good way to provide those services. It's not essential in terms of the composition. It could be just four community revitalization specialists rather than three and a supervisor, but, you know, we think that that's probably the best way to address the needs of the community.
Okay. So, I think maybe hopefully some of those more permanent decisions can be held off until we have an opportunity to maybe form the council subcommittee and work with the reorganization and provide some input on matters like that, because I think there's a valid discussion there. Okay, kind of shifting gears a little bit, how many Chodos do we have in the city?
Currently Habitat for Humanity is our one Chodo. We are trying to develop capacity and have requested some other agencies to apply for and become Chodos. It is, you know, always a struggle to find agencies that really want to provide those services and have the capacity that's required. It's pretty substantial for an annual reevaluation. We've been having conversations with Cesar Chavez Foundation, with EOC, to try to determine if they have the capacity or the desire to become a Chodo. Once you have that title, you know, it does come with some responsibilities that they may or may not want to continue to do over time.
And, okay, so we only have one. Now, would that be, would that be a function of the housing, the new housing manager, to help develop more capacity with our Chodos?
Absolutely.
Okay. And what's the status of our lead grant?
Of our lead grant?
Lead grant, I'm sorry, lead grant.
Okay, sorry. We are, I don't have the exact numbers, but we are on track to finish our program in October. But we also have a partnership with the county. The county also does lead abatement programs as well. So, we will continue to administer those lead abatement programs either through us or in partnership with the county to ensure that we're hitting all of the homes that need to be cleared.
Okay. And how many units of affordable housing are we working on in this budget?
So, this budget, current, or the future budget?
This budget.
Okay, so our current year, we've, will have completed 130 rehabs, which includes lead rehabs, senior paint, code distress property, targeted neighborhood rehabs. That's in the 2014 budget. In the, under the home program, we have about 120 to 130 units that will be constructed or have already been constructed with $2014.
Okay, okay. Okay. So, we didn't get the SCG grant this year that we applied for.
Right.
And I know we had the 10% match, the $100,000, 10% match. What do we plan to do with that, those funds?
First, we're going to attempt to find another grant to match that with, but the other alternative is to use those funds specifically for those activities that we had come to you and talked to you about, the pattern book, as well as Southwest Fresno specific plan. The community development block grants that are assigned to the Southwest Fresno specific plan can only be spent within the city limits. And the, kind of the purpose of the SGC application and grant was to be able to continue to plan those areas that are within the sphere but not in the city limits. So-
So, can we just do that? Can we just-
Absolutely.
Apply that? And I want to make a motion for that, to just move that money towards those planning, those planning efforts, since that's where it was going anyway? Yeah, I want to, we had a 10% required match for an SCG grant that was going to supplement the planning efforts in Southwest. We have that money hanging out there. I'd like to just move it over into the plan already. That's where it was going to be used anyway, instead of hanging it out there. I want to move it there. Thank you. You know, and those are all the questions that I have today. But I do want to say this, and as I finish this up, Jennifer, you have a very large department with a lot of responsibility and competing interests, and, you know, I really do hope that we get the staffing worked out, and I'm curious to see when we're going to get our, I didn't even get a chance to ask about the assistant director position, because that's going to be vital. I know we wanted to have a couple of those, and I certainly hope that we are in the process of getting that, because I think, you know, we're on the right track, but we have a lot to do. And you're doing a good job, and keep going down that path. There's just a lot there, and, you know, that's why there were so many questions, because you oversee quite a bit. And so, I want to thank you for certainly getting the efforts to move the Southwest Planning Grant forward. That's a very big deal for the long-term sustainability of that neighborhood. And there are a lot of elements that are in place right now that I see, and they're kind of hanging on the fringes, and I know that we're trying to bring them together. So, I encourage you on those efforts to continue bringing them together. You stepped into a very big role, and I know you're, you know, you're biting them off kind of one chunk at a time, you know, and I know it may seem like we're grilling here, up here. We're really not, you know. We're very interested in what happens, and we have a big interest, obviously, in a lot of these elements of your very large division. So, thank you for bearing with me in all my questions today.
Thank you.
Councilman Jean.
Thank you. Well, Jennifer, I just think you just get a perspective of how important code is to all of us, because each one of us get our fair share of a tremendous amount of calls that range, you know, from dog barking to late-night noises, to everything that we used to have and not able to do, and to where we're trying to get back. So, I just think that that's a tremendous amount of, and that's just one department, and you've got several activities going on. So, I want to echo Member Baines' comment, especially what you're taking. So, I appreciate all the creativity that you're trying. But I just want to quickly follow up. I heard about the weed abatement program that you had going after. Can you just do a trade memo for us as to how that's been and effective? Because I wanted to ask for that, because we've passed, I think, a couple of years back on a law that allows us to have a little bit more teeth, in terms of those homeowners that are either there or not there, for us to be able to move a little bit faster. So, just kind of a quick summary on how effective we've been and how effective we've been able to use that particular policy that we've had. That was it. I mean, the rest were already asked by my council colleagues, and then how it was going to move into terms of where there are participations, and I do support that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm done, Council President.
Council President, I have one more question, sorry. I had on my list, and I forgot to ask it. We do have, and it's on my last page here, sorry about that, but we, one of the things I know that HUD wanted us to do was make sure we were getting more of the CDBG allocation into the hands of the community. What are we doing to address that?
Right. And I wasn't sure if we were doing CDBG as a separate presentation this morning, or Jane?
Oh, is it?
Yeah, it's a separate item.
Sorry.
Yes, I believe that we are.
I can answer it now, or I can defer?
You can defer, that's fine.
Okay.
Is that it, Councilman Baines?
All right. Don't want to go for a fourth time?
Just kidding. Jennifer, all right, almost everything has been said that I have been taking down notes on. I would just, you know, for clarification, because I keep hearing council members run into the same little speed bump, I was going to say brick wall, probably a speed bump, but, that I keep getting, which, one thing to me that kind of makes this a little confusing, and I know if we're confused, maybe even some members of the community that could be watching this or check in with us later could be confused, but essentially, community revitalization, you know, it's a bad, it's a bad name. We all use code, we all use code enforcement. We've used code, that phrase "code enforcement" for 20 years, and now we're trying to, then we spent several years trying to rebrand that as community revitalization, and now you're splitting community revitalization into two parts, and really, one of them is code enforcement. And I just wish we were still calling that code enforcement, you know?
And you know what? That's a great suggestion to come out of the task force.
Okay.
To really call it what we're doing in the field, absolutely.
Okay. So, maybe we can do that. I see what you're doing. I agree with Councilman Capriolio and Councilman Quintero. It would be wonderful if we had a nice little flow chart. I love these flow charts, by the way. You guys provided us this flow chart for how, you know, how the organization is run. So, I would actually like to see a flow chart real similar to this on code enforcement, the general fund part and the CDBG part. So, we can see, and Councilman Capriolio specifically would like to see a before and after, so that we can see the way that these transfers take place and duties. So, on those transfers, I see that we're, and it is kind of hard to follow, but we're having a lot of moving parts within this department. And I mean, I've tried to listen to every council member and your responses. I think I'm starting to get a grasp on it, but if we could have a little flow chart that shows those moving parts, that'd be cool. And then, but at the end of the day, I believe I've got this right, we've got six brand-new employees that will be hired. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, even though different employees are moving and doing transfers and conversions, we're getting six new, or any of the six new employees, so last year, we just had a previous reorganization of this department, and we had to let some employees go. Are those employees part of this six coming back, or could these be different new employees, or could you tell me a little bit about that?
They are certainly eligible to apply for any of those positions that are available. They are not specifically in the same classification that the employees were previously. We have records clerks. We talked a little bit about how important records are and the records retention within the division. There are personnel directly related to community outreach as it relates to businesses and neighborhoods, and there are personnel in the planning division, GIS, and analysts of data and maps to ensure that we're appropriately zoning and planning for growth as it occurs. Market segmentation, understanding where development is occurring and going, so that we have the right lands available and zoned at the right time. So, those are the three categories of the six new employees.
Thank you. And so, like I said, almost all my questions have been answered, but we would appreciate that flow- that flow chart would really be really helpful.
Got it.
Thank you, and I know that, I agree with Councilman Baines, you've got a lot on your plate. You've hit the ground running in your first year and my interactions with you on better business-friendly Fresno have proven to me that you're very capable. I'm glad about that. So, I thank you to all of your department. We know that you cover a wide array of things that happen in our, in our city. So, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I, I did want to say thank you to my staff because they're the people who really get it done. I just get up here and talk about it. So, they're the ones who really do all the work and, and we have a really great team in Darm. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council, we are going to, we're so close to lunchtime now. We're going to break for lunch right now. At 1:30, we're going to come back and begin with CDBG, home and NSP combined and then have some other departments after that. So, we'll be back at 1:30.
CDBG, home and NSP. Okay.
Well, I think besides everything that we've already covered with CDBG, the presentation starts on A15 in the front of your books. Basically, starts out with a narrative. The, the important schedule, however, that you'll probably want to focus on is on page A16. That details out the program entitlement that we anticipate this year, which is just ever so slightly lower than it was in '14. There is some program income that is anticipated. We also have the repayment, which we've discussed. And then, we have some carryover money. These are projects that were allocated in FY14 that are not yet finished and so that funding is being carried over into next year. So, that $991,000 is already spoken for and it's already been designated by the council, excuse me, for projects. As you can see, these projects are broken out into the various types of CDBG activities, acquisition and rehabilitation. We have the senior paint program funded at the same level as we had in '14. We have the, the decrease in code enforcement that has already been discussed concerning the, the split and the movement back of certain activities back into the general fund. We have the anti-graffiti program, which again, there is no lessening of effort for that program. It's simply a reassignment of some sworn police staff back into the active police patrol and out of anti-graffiti. We have the required Section 108 loan repayment, which is mandated. We have to make that payment on our three Section 108 loans. Then, we have the category of planning and administration and you see the various projects that we have there. Then, we have public facilities and improvements. We have the Roy and Almy reconstruction. That is a carryover project. So, that money is a part of that 991. And, the neighborhood street improvements, that is the CDBG portion of the 2 million that was designated. So, there's 600,000 in general fund and 1.4 in CDBG for the neighborhood street projects that I believe were discussed yesterday with Public Works. We also have some additional park facility improvements that will be done. This is partially funded by carryover because some of those projects that the council approved last year haven't quite been finished. So, there are some carryover projects in that, but there's also some new projects in there, about $175,000 worth of new projects. And then, we see the public service. See, the senior hot meals is at the same level. We have additional after-school programs that will now be funded by CDBG. And, we also see that the pop teams or the, I can't remember what the other name of it is, the, the impact teams are being moved over into the general fund, again, because of the HUD review and some difficulties in, in assignments and in the substantiation of expenditures. It was simply deemed to be easier to move it over into the general fund where those requirements are not, are not present. Aside from that, I would put out that there are two categories where there is a cap, a regulatory cap. One of those is planning and administration. You can see that within the table. The FY15 cap on that is 1.3 million dollars and you can see we are just barely underneath that. And then, we also have the FY15 cap for public service and that is $981,000 and we are slightly below that as well at 829. These are regulatory caps that are set by HUD that we have no control over and they are calculated based on the amount of program entitlement plus the program income. So, that is how those caps are, are created. Anyway, that concludes my review of CDBG and I believe Jennifer is still here, the director, and I am available to answer any questions you may have.
I'd like to address this presentation. All right. Councilman Baines.
Okay. So, I had a couple of questions. One, one that I was, I had to wait till we were at the right hearing to ask. So, so I have a specific community group that pretty much regularly meets with HUD representatives in Sacramento and the HEAT, the HEAT group. And, I know most of you guys know who they are, but every now, and every now and then, they certainly have some, some valid points. One of the, one of the concerns they have that, that I share is that if you look at A17, it kind of describes right there in the middle what the community development block grant program is for, you know, as a flexible program that provides community, communities with resources to address a wide range of unique community development needs, such and so forth. It says the CDBG program provides annual grants on a formula basis. You know, did we provide any grants to the community this time around? First of all, did we provide any grants out of CDBG to, to any of our community groups?
There are not any designated from this budget for, to go directly to a specific nonprofit. However, some of these funds, we have a subrecipient agreement with EOC to do our targeted neighborhood, our targeted homeowner rehab program and that's about $2 million. It's a combination of CDBG and home. So, they'll be administering that program for us. And, some of the other programs are being directed to services within the neighborhoods and the, the Southwest Fresno specific plan will be put together with a steering committee made up of people who live in the neighborhood. So, the funds are being directed to the target areas in a much more strategic way than, than we have in past budgets.
Okay. So, we're, so do we, in future budgets, budgets, I'm assuming we plan to begin to grant community groups, these block grant funds because that clearly is the, the intent as well. I certainly appreciate the strategic use by, by our entity, but I know the program guidelines specifically call for granting out these funds to community groups.
So, the intent would be through the consolidated planning process for the council to identify specific priorities and HCDC will go out to the community, will gather community input as to what priorities that the community feels are, are most important for use of these federal program funds. Consolidated plan covers all of those federal formula programs that we talked about this morning and through that we'll prioritize. We'll say, okay, is, is it senior programs? Is it meals programs? Is it after-school programs? And, the intent is to have specific directed RFPs by HCDC to ask for input and then they would decide, determine who is best able to provide those services to the community that community is asking for.
Right. So, we're not doing that this year, though?
We have not done that this year, no.
Do we plan to?
Absolutely. For, for next year as part of the consolidated planning process, we need to start with the gathering and finding the priorities. If we can complete that and get that adopted prior to next, next fiscal year's funding round, absolutely, we would, we would use that method.
What would prohibit us from completing it?
There are some timing requirements and some certifications that have to be completed. It's, it's a 2015 consolidated plan, so we really don't need to adopt it until July 1. Typically, we've gone out and we've used outside consultants to do that for us. We intend to do that in-house to have more control over how much, you know, how much input we gather from the community to ensure that we're reaching all the segments of the community, not just a few that, that a consultant has gone out to, to touch.
So, we will have the consolidated plan done by next budget year so we can do these activities?
We will have it adopted. Typically, it would be adopted as part of the, of the budgeting process, but we could certainly put it in front of the budgeting process so that we could, could use a new method of allocating funding.
Okay. So, and I'll tell you why I'm, I'm asking that is because I know that, that HUD was on us. This was one of the, the issues that HUD commented on with the way that we allocate our CDBG resource is not getting it directly into the hands of our community groups, which is part of what this resource is for. So, I'm certainly going to be looking, and this is probably now the second budget year that I've asked this question again. So, and I'm hearing you say to me right now that next year, we for sure will be granting out CDBG dollars to our community organizations.
With the help of HCDC.
Excuse me. Yeah, excuse me. If I could just clarify that that is one of HUD's recommendations. We are not obligated to do it that way. We certainly are looking towards how we can get those funds back out directly in, into the community, but I don't want to, to lead you down the path that absolutely that's where we'll, we'll be next year. That, that is our goal, but of course, some of it depends on the funding that, that we receive and what our allocation is as well. So, you know, granted, all of that will be taken into consideration, but I don't want you to think that absolutely that's where it'll end up. It is a recommendation that we utilize the funds in that fashion.
Right. Well, I think it's my recommendation too. So, I'm going to be looking very specifically next year to, to see the work we've done, that we've done as an agency to make sure that we're in a position to begin once again granting these funds to the community. I know it was long before you came, but Bruce, I know you remember when we used to actually give grants to community organizations, quite like the intent of CDBG is, and I would like us to begin to return to that. While I certainly appreciate the strategic use of the resource and I agree with that. We do have to figure out a way to involve our community groups and make sure that we are following up on, although HUD may call it a recommendation, I would, I would venture to say that it's a probably relatively strong one since they're taking the time to, to give us that and, and I'm going to concur with that. So, next year, I'll certainly be paying close attention to the work we've done leading up to this, to prepare, to make sure we've done everything we can to prepare for that with the, the consolidated plan that you say we need to have. And, you said that you believe it certainly can be done by next budget year. So, I'm going to be looking to see what we're doing to make sure we're at least beginning the process of granting these dollars to our community groups. Thanks.
Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you. Hello again.
Hello.
I'm looking at page A17 and it says on the right column, under home program, "The low-income assistance grant program addresses health and safety issues for low-income homeowners." What does that mean?
That's our distressed, our distressed properties grant that we provide to assist homeowners who have received a citation, who are unable to complete the repairs necessary to, to have that citation removed. So, they, that, those individuals or those properties are identified by the community revitalization team, forwarded to the housing team who then evaluate to ensure that we, they're really the property owner, they meet the income guidelines, that we can actually provide the grant and then we contract out and have the work completed. So, we have a few of those underway right now.
Any of those in District 4?
That's a good question. Are any of them in District 4 distressed properties code enforcement grant? We'll have to get that information for you.
Okay, if you would, please, thank you.
Absolutely.
And, who would be the first person we would talk to if we were thinking we had a homeowner that qualified? Is there a concierge, we said, in the planning department type person?
So, right now, the person that you would direct that inquiry to would be Jack Robertson, who's our interim housing manager, and he would be able to get a staff person to meet with them, evaluate whether or not they qualified for the program.
On the next page at A18, the last paragraph, it talks about 11 neighborhoods and community centers throughout Fresno that have the after-school program. Is there any particular district that has most of that or all of it or how is that spread around? spread around?
So, the 11 neighborhoods, they all have to be in, in CDBG target neighborhoods, and the, the individuals who are served, who we are paying for, the support for, also has to, have to be eligible for the programming. Where exactly all of the community centers are, I can get you a list. I don't have that right in front of me.
And then, on the CDBG target neighborhood, what would we find, is there a format, or a, how would we, how would I find out if?
The map of the CDBG target areas.
Is that set in stone, or is that?
Yes, that's established, it's actually on the first page of the section A-15. So, the yellow census tracts that are highlighted in yellow are CDBG eligible.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
On the right-hand column, it talks about neighborhood street improvements, 1.4 million. Is that in addition to the 2 million, or part of the 2 million that was set aside for street repairs?
That, that is, that is part of the 2 million. That, that is the CDBG portion of the total 2 million for the neighborhood street improvements. The other 600,000 is in general fund.
You ruined my dream.
Pardon?
You ruined my dream, I hope it was 2 million plus 1.4 million for total.
Unfortunately, no.
3.4 million, darn it. And then, I remember we had a meeting with HUD, I don't know if you were here or not, you weren't, and on their map, they had dots of locations of activity from HUD, and I asked them if there were no dots in my area, I know I've got a dot now, do I have any more dots? Does anybody know?
We, we have, there is a, one of the home programs, home program rehabs that we are doing is in District 4, and there is, and we're anticipating that some of the park improvements will occur in District 4 as well. So, there, there are a combination of, of dots, but, you know, that's, that goes back to Councilmember Baines' point this morning of having those updates on how certain activities are rolling out, or maybe it was Councilmember Jeong, on getting those quarterly reports and having an update. So, the annual action plan is provided to HUD in September, and it is public, and we would certainly be happy to get you a copy, especially of the summary, where it shows where those activities took place.
Excellent, thank you for that.
And also, I would just like to remind you that some of those dots are bigger than other dots, so while you may have fewer dots, some of them may be worth higher value.
This is true.
I'd take any dot I could get. I remember Viking Village being a potential dot, and I think that was funded in 2014, but I don't know of any activity that's, that's taken place.
It's currently, the rehab in Viking Village is currently underway, and that is a home-funded project.
Would that be one of the programs you just addressed, Home Program for District 4, that would be?
Yes.
Is that one of many?
It's one of one.
One of one, well, we're, we're progressing. Again, thank you, your team does a great job, we appreciate you and everyone that you work with, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Councilman Baines.
Sorry, my staff just reminded, or showed me something I didn't know, and it's kind of going back to the, the, the community portion of the CDBG funds. Now, now, it's my understanding that we, we did have a process where we asked community groups to apply?
We did, as well as all of the internal departments. They were all required to submit applications, and they will be required to sign subrecipient agreements to ensure, again, compliance with the federal regulations.
Okay, it sounded like a moment ago that we, that when I was going down my other line of questioning, it didn't sound like we had had anybody apply, or we did a process, but we in fact did do a process?
Yes.
Okay. So, how did, so we, we did have a process where community groups applied, you said internal groups applied, and what, none of the community groups were funded at all?
Do, let me have Crystal answer the questions directly related to the application process.
Okay.
So, we prepared a book, we went to HCDC, they came back with recommendations, and we have presented the budget that reflects some of those recommendations.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Council, Crystal Smith, MA 3 with Darm. May I help you?
So, we did in fact have a process whereby community groups could apply for CDBG funds?
Correct, that process was initiated in January.
Okay, and did we have community groups respond?
Yes, we did, both departments and.
Okay, and, and, and we chose to not fund any of the community groups?
Well, what happens is we go through the application process, and then HCDC reviews and ranks the applications, and then it folds into the budget process and is forwarded to the mayor's office for review and recommendation.
Okay, so, so all of the projects were ranked?
Correct.
Okay, would it be possible for us to see the rankings?
I'll submit it through the budget office and.
Okay, then I'll make that an information request. I'd like to, I'd like to see the rankings of all of, and they'll have the rankings of all the projects, I'm assuming?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have any explanation as to why none of the community groups were funded?
I, no, those decisions aren't made at the line level, however, we need to understand that the internal departments, the, the projects that they do conduct are very eligible to the program, and they meet various priorities, and some of the projects really can't be done by outside agencies, they have to be done internally. So I want you to know that, yes, they are very eligible, and they do meet the priorities established in the consolidated plan, as well as the other priorities that have been established.
So, so the community, the community groups that did apply, they actually are eligible?
Yes.
Under this consolidated plan? So we do have a consolidated plan?
Oh, absolutely, we have to operate under a consolidated plan.
Okay, okay, it sounded like a moment ago, we may not have had one, so I'm certainly glad to get some clarity. And then I guess I'll ask Jennifer, but, but hold on, before you go, Crystal, it's nice to see you back, I know you were gone for a while, people have been calling my office and glad that you're back, so, certainly glad to see you back.
We're very glad she is back. Yes, the consolidated plan actually has been required for a number of years, and every five years, we're required to renew it.
So how, so then, I'll ask you then, Jennifer, because I'm sure these decisions were made at your level, why didn't any of our community groups get any funding?
How many, may I just cut to the chase? The reason that none of the community groups this year were funded is because there were, as we said, there were priorities and choices to be made. We decided the higher priority was to fund things like senior hot meals programs, park programs, that have historically been funded out of the general fund. The shift of CDBG out of code created a hole in the general fund, so we are funding programmings in parks, and then there is funding set aside within the eligible districts to fund road repair, construction, reconstruction, or construction projects. If, if there's a desire to fund community groups, then it's going to create a impact or shortfall in, in the general fund assumptions.
Yeah, and we had that discussion last year, Bruce, when we, when we made the switch, and I think we're, we're kind of well aware of that. And I think what, what I would prefer certainly is probably more of a dialogue, because I didn't even know that we had even requested the community to, to respond, and we had that process going on since January, and I don't even know when we made the decisions. But I think we, we do understand that we were doing things out of the general fund, that we were paying for things out of CDBG for the city, the city purposes, that certainly the community purposes qualify for too, and as you know how I am, I like balance. So, I, I think, I think what the discussion is, we need to strike the balance, and, and not that our priorities aren't extremely important, but this resource is, is, was intended for a balance between government and the community. And right now, we're, you know, and for many years, we've, this particular resource, we've only held for ourselves and our purposes, which I get, and I'm not, I, I do understand that, but I think based off of the problem, the, the feedback we receive from HUD, certainly they would like to see us use this resource for the community, and certainly not all of it, but some of it, and also balance, temper that with the things that we need. So, in the future, it sounds like we can accomplish this, I certainly would like to be in, you know, I think five of the seven council districts here, or actually, six of the seven council districts have a CDBG eligible.
All seven.
All seven?
Yes.
Even Lee? Oh my gosh, look at you. She just said you do. No, you cannot have any of mine. But I, I, I think, I think it would, I think it would be beneficial that when, that when, that when we're going out and we're doing the RFPs and whatnot, that we're, we're made aware and at least consulted on some of that, because I'm sure, I'm sure community groups in every district apply, if, if I, if I, other than maybe Lee's, but, but I certainly like, certainly would like to be consulted. And Jennifer, it would've been good to know that when I was going down that line of questioning earlier, that you would've given me that information. It would've been really easy for you to say, hey, you know what, we did do a, a public process, and this, this is what we came up with, because clearly, that's what I was trying to get at, maybe I didn't articulate it well enough, but just in the future, if you kind of, kind of just think where I'm going, you know, you could've helped me with that, you know, some time ago, so I wouldn't have to queue back up and try to figure it all out, so, just food for thought in the future.
And Councilmember, just for point of clarification too, the public process is, is required by HUD, and so we do go through that process every year, and it's publicly noticed, so what we can do is make sure that council is aware that when we start that process, that, that you're informed.
Yeah, thanks Renee, that, that would be very helpful.
Jennifer, in relation to CDBG funds, Councilman Capriolio mentioned his shortage of dots in District 4, and then you pointed to the map on page A-5, and there is a couple of little gold sections up in District 2, and I wanted to do a quick little recap on those if I could. In the community, in the community of Pinedale, what do we have active applications of CDBG or, or the whole combined funds use in, in that community?
We can certainly find that out for you, I don't have the exact addresses of all the projects. We did just look, and there is one, and one of the distressed property grants is in Council District 4, but we'll certainly look that up.
We're done with District 4 now.
We'll, we'll look up for you as well.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then, Assistant Manager Smith just stole my thunder, but if you could for sure, and Crystal, help us with this, if you could for sure keep council in the loop on this upcoming cycle of community involvement and application process for these funds, or, you know, their involvement, so I think from what I'm hearing is that council wants to be notified as that process is happening, so that we could engage those who engage us consistently, and make sure that they're, now is your time, and now is when you have to go fill out this application, so I think we all want to see that. So, in the upcoming year, and I, I actually should throw this in, I think that we requested it last year, if my memory serves me, correct me, but it doesn't always, but for this year, I'm going to write it down so that we have a note, so that we can have this next year when that cycle begins again, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, cool. All right, the screen is clear, so we are done there, and we are now to the ESG presentation.
The Emergency Solutions Grant is also a federal formula program specifically designed for outreach and targeted investment in getting homeless off the street and into permanent and supportive housing. As you know, we have just kicked off the 25 Cities Initiative campaign, and we have awards for past year's recipients that are being undertaken at this time to ensure that we're providing the appropriate housing. There are caps, again, with this program, as well as, as the other federal programs, what can be spent on housing, what can be spent on outreach, and what can be spent on interim solutions. So, that's why it's called the Emergency Solutions Grant. We are working very closely with the Continuum of Care, which is our homeless Fresno and Madera County Continuum of Care service providers, to ensure that we're getting those dollars out. As you know, we have committed $100,000 of ESG funding of our current round to ensure that we're matching the funds that are coming in from the community. It is a dollar-for-dollar match as it relates to how we provide the homeless services. So, that is also going to be wrapped up in the consolidated plan, the update, the newest one that we'll be working on this year.
Any members of the public like to make a comment? All right then, Councilman Jeong. Jennifer?
Probably want to stay, since you're the only one that's presenting. Is this part of our, where the homeless task force falls under, part of the money comes to this?
It, it does not currently fall under that. Traditionally, the county and the city have worked together to provide subgrants to agencies to provide homeless services that fall under the ESG programs. We are trying to get some clarification on whether or not we can spend any of those ESG dollars for our internal homeless task force. We have not received that clarification this time. The state cannot sub-grant it to any public entities, so typically, the city has not sub-granted it to itself or to any public entities, but only to private nonprofits.
So this is within our capacity to, on a competitive basis, RP it out to others, not to us, but this money then is under the auspices of the, of the city, not necessarily the county?
The city receives some, the county receives some, and typically, because we're part of the Continuum of Care, and it's a requirement to, to meet priorities within the continuum plan for homelessness, that we grant those at the same time that the county does. The new RFP for this year has not been released, but we anticipate that some point this summer, when we get a better handle on the 25 Cities Initiative and how the new matching system that's required by HUD is working, then we'll know exactly how we can grant out those funds.
Okay, so let me ask it this way. We each have our own pot, but we're technically working together?
Right.
Okay, so, so we're waiting now for, for the new initiative to play itself out before we, we together move forward on, on the, on the ESG and how that would look?
So, we could grant the funds out to agencies right now, but we want to make sure that they're hitting the priorities that those agencies are identifying this summer as it relates to this 100 cities, or the, to the 25 Cities Initiative. So we have the first 100 days, and all of the agencies that are part, or the Continuum of Care and a subgroup of agencies are working on identifying what are the, the barriers and the hurdles that we have to overcome, and HUD is committed to give some waivers and to allow us to make sure that we're able to grant those funds in a way that meets those. So as we start hearing about those hurdles, we'll be able to better, to ensure that our RFP is meeting those requirements.
Okay, when you say we, you're talking in conjunction?
The county, the city and the county.
Okay, the city and county with, with both the ESG, ESG funding source, okay. Maybe it's a city manager question, but I'll, I'll ask Jennifer, what was our update with, just a quick update on, on our homeless task force, where we are, and kind of the overall outlook?
I think that's going to be a city manager question.
If you're asking, well, okay, from a, the task force is, the chief pointed out the other day, they, which is a combination of the federal police department, code enforcement, and community sanitation, they're dealing with the immediate issues that are now, you know, these small little enclaves of, and I don't want to call them encampments, because we're continuing trying to address that, as well as the underlying issue of the shopping carts. We are also working with the city attorney's office, and you will probably see a proposed change in requirements for recycling centers that would. That would, we're not going to affect current recycle centers, but it will have an impact on the siting and requirements of CUP for future recycling centers. From a housing standpoint, we recently allocated $1 million in tenant-based rental assistance. I think we were about signed the contract with the housing authority. It's about to be executed. That's going to be helpful, because right now, all the efforts of our task force, in a lot of ways, they are the first point of contact and repeatedly seen and meeting with these individuals, and sometimes have actually transported them to one of the service providers to help coordinate, facilitate that. So from a comprehensive approach, we're dealing with the legal issue of illegal encampments, the shopping cart, and then what is, we believe, part of the other leg of this issue is the recycling centers. So we're dealing with that side of it. But at the same time, we're also working with our partners through the Continuum of Care to provide, again, through the tenant-based rental assistance, a million dollars. We still have Fresno First Steps Home. And then we have the ESG, and we're trying to match $100,000. That's what we announced the other day. And I need to get an update as to where we are with getting pledges for that. So I think overall, with the help of our other community stakeholders, we're making some pretty good headway with dealing with, you know, the homeless population in our community.
Do we have some concrete numbers in terms of the impact we do have on our homeless population? I know that we've done several point of...
We can get you the numbers, and you know, those are a point in time.
Yeah.
As Councilmember Baines, staff will tell you, Greg Barfield says that's a very fluid number. But we can certainly provide the council with the number of contacts we've made and how many people we've housed, or the last, well, since the encampments. I know it was in the neighborhood of about 100, if not more. Who have, and understand, those are the individuals we've housed. Some individuals have chosen to go and move in with family members, or family members have taken them. So we can try to put together a number of those that have housed, or those who have been somehow provided a different opportunity via a family member or somebody else. And we could probably do that via trade memo within the next two, three weeks.
Yeah, and that trade memo adds to, I think I made the same request. I know that one of the big selling point, or at least the initiative for the 10-Year Homeless Plan, was our cost of healthcare. You know, that if we addressed the homeless community and be proactive about it, that it would cost us so much less than dealing with the recurring health emergency services that our community hospital and/or other health facility ends up providing for those emergency, and then the cyclical of those individuals. And that was a big driving factor, that at the end of the day, it's all about money, that we end up paying from the community's perspective. So if there is a cost analysis, because I know there was a cost basis that was used for pushing that. But if there is a way for us to say that in the many years of efforts that we put here, that we actually save the community in terms of that repeat to emergency service, or what we're able to give people off of those type of services, would, I think would be helpful to, so if you can have that as part of the trade memo, what we think, I'm not sure if we're going to be able to get a direct number, but at least what we could effectively guesstimate of that saving. Because we're putting a lot of effort, a lot of money, a lot of collaborative partnership to put a dent, not only in terms of our homeless population, but also in terms of the costs that we as a community bear for those services. Thanks, Bruce. That was all, Jennifer. Thank you very much.
I think we're done then. Thank you very much, Jennifer, for jumping in there on that. And now we are on to the final presentation of the day, the one that Councilman Brand promises to put under extreme microscope, the mayor's office and the city manager's office.
I will be brief. The presentation for the mayor and the city manager begins on Page B29. Looking at the financial documents on Page B31, you'll see that there is a substantial decrease in this department. Remember, however, that there have been some things that have been moved out of this department, primarily the CDBG revenues and the NSP revenues. These used to be housed within the capital section of this department. They have now been moved, along with everything else, over to DARM. So that is basically why you're seeing the rather large decreases in both revenues and expenditures. As far as the operating side, we have the Enterprise Zone individuals who were moved over, I believe, last year. This program ended on December the 31st, 2014. And the revenue and the expenditure budget of this department reflects that the vouchersing will end on December the 31st of this year. What that primarily means is that we no longer anticipate any additional revenue after that date coming in to the Enterprise Zone Fund, and that those positions will be supported by the General Fund after that date. The Economic Development Director has been fully funded for next year because it was defunded last year. And since that position is now filled subsequently, that position has now been funded for next year. And I believe that that, ah, the other staffing impacts. We have public information positions. We have a community coordinator position, which we've already previously discussed with DPU, and the Director of Communications, which is also within this budget. We also have one last thing to note, is that the Emergency Manager Officer has been moved, and I believe I mentioned this during the fire presentation, has been moved from the city manager's office over into the fire department. So that costing has also been moved. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you, Jane. Any members of the public like to address the mayor or city manager's budget? All right, if not, Councilman Brand.
The call center is no longer in the city manager's office?
No, the call center is now in ISD. It was moved there last year.
It seems like this is the year everything's like to shuffle here. I just noticed, NSP, is that for the mayor's office?
No, the revenue came into the, came into the city manager's office, capital section. It was just a holding place for the NSP revenue. It's now been moved over, what there is left of it, has been moved over to DARM, along with all the other federal grant. So that's why you see a decrease in that revenue, because CDBG is no longer being received within that department. It's just being received in another department.
Okay. And then the Emergency Manager has been moved to Fire? Okay. But was before in the city manager's office? Is that correct? Okay. I get that one. Okay. And then Enterprise, how is that doing as far as funding? I know they were talking about defunding that at the state level, huh?
Well, they did. And in fact, we have budgeted half a year's worth of appropriations, or half a year appropriations and revenues within that Enterprise Zone Fund, which is a separate fund within that department. And so for the first six months of the year, we've anticipated half a year's revenue coming in. And then we also have half a year's worth of employee expenses in the Enterprise Zone Fund. And at the end of that time, those three positions will be moved over to the General Fund.
Okay. And the overall staffing combined is same as?
Yes, the staffing is unchanged.
Point five positions, okay. And economic development, who's that guy that does economic development? I swear, he looks familiar. So is Larry, is Larry full-time or part-time?
He's full-time.
Okay, okay. And then is there a staff?
So once we moved the economic development function into the mayor, city manager's office, with that came the other economic development staff, people who were in other departments, which included the Enterprise Zone staff, and the local business initiatives manager staff position have now all been put in one place under Larry.
There's three total?
Okay, so let me think. So there's Amy Fuente, sorry, she got married. Amy Fuente, Kelly Trevino, and then Kelly has two admin clerk positions in the Enterprise Department. Am I missing someone? That's it. Yeah, Kelly and the two admin clerks are currently funded by the Enterprise Zone Fund. Those are the three individuals or three positions that will be moving over to the General Fund come next calendar year.
Is that four?
Yes. So three are Enterprise Fund, funded, and the other two are General Fund.
So some of these overlap then, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I know Wilma Kwan, she moved into the city manager's office, right?
Correct.
Okay. And I want to go back to 2009. Was DCR the focus then on economic development?
So DCR was focused on downtown community revitalization. And so within that was a downtown economic development focus, and then the community revitalization. So once we, what's the word? Dissolved the DCR division, those positions were redistributed. So the portion that had to do with planning functions went into DARM. And the portion that had to do with more of an economic development function or more specialized function went into the mayor manager's office for, you know, so that the appropriate people could be supervising those staff positions.
Okay, and I know you've been around a while, so when I came in...
Just a little bit.
Yeah, a few years. 2008, Scott Johnson had the department. How many people were then in the economic development department?
Oh, wow. Okay, so I believe Kelly Trevino and her staff positions under Enterprise, six. Six.
Yeah, I remember I came here, and they all showed up. They had the same shirts on and stuff.
Yep.
Does that sound right, Bruce? Okay.
Yeah, we don't have shirts.
Okay. And then Jim Patterson, was it Rod Webster that was the economic?
So Mark Bahi and Rod Webster were in the city manager's office under, doing an economic development function.
So how many people did they have in their?
I'm sorry, what was that?
How many people did Patterson have?
Four, we're thinking? Because Lisa LeBlanc, wasn't Lisa LeBlanc, Rod Webster, Mark Bahi? And support staff. You're stretching me there.
So you're about the same level, right?
Yeah.
And now the emphasis has moved from downtown to citywide, correct?
Oh, Jerry Haynes.
Right. So it's now a citywide focus?
Oh, absolutely. And we're, the economic development function is more focused on industrial development, the job-creating industrial development. So that's Larry's main function, is helping to, for recruitment and expansion of the existing businesses and recruiting new of the industrial base within our city.
So there's a dual purpose, the retention of existing, expansion, and attracting?
Absolutely.
With a focus on what? Ag-related, food processing?
Obviously, we have a heavy focus on food processing. Larry, do you want to come up and, do you want Larry to come up and talk a little bit about, more about the specifics?
I want to grill him today.
Yeah, okay. Be gentle.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Councilmember Brand. And congratulations on those of you who got re-elected, making the runoff. So, yes, sir, the focus of economic development at this time, and I kind of feel in the position where Craig had been. However, I'm completely focused differently. He had been downtown and working on the downtown issues. The administration, the mayor, has asked me to work not exclusively, but certainly concentrate our efforts on industrial development. It's kind of a three arms, if you will. There's the expansion side of business development. So companies that are ready to grow their business, they want to add another line of product. They want to expand their industrial base and their employment base. There's the attraction side of it, where we're talking to companies that are interested in the Fresno region, Fresno area, and Fresno in specific, and what we can do to help them come through the process and locate in Fresno. There is the retention aspect of it. And those are the companies that may be struggling or having problems or issues, being able to make a go of it here, and we want to try to help them as well. So...
Any kind of metrics where you can measure? How many groups came here? How many we closed? How many went someplace else? And somebody did like a follow-up, why did you choose, you know, Modesta over Fresno?
Yes, and I'm keeping a running list for the division on those that we're talking with and we're working with, and categorize them either as attraction, retention, or expansion. And as we're going through that, I'm trying to fill out basically a running notes of what it was that triggered them to come in in the first place. What was it that we were able to resolve? The issues that we were able to be successful? Were there issues we weren't, that were outside of our ability to deal with? And then on the attraction issue, what was it that got you interested in Fresno in the first place? How did you hear about us? Was it competitors that are located here? Was it, you've got a source material that comes out of this area? And then what helped you finally make the decision to be in here? So I don't have a spreadsheet necessarily, but I'm keeping a running note, computerized note of that.
Okay, do you have like a budget for advertising, going to trade conventions, you know, like Las Vegas?
Well, currently, there was some holdover money, and I don't have the numbers off the top of my head right now that were left over from last year that wasn't utilized last year. And we've been trying to utilize it here. But there was $30,000 or $40,000, I think, that was Enterprise, it was part of the Enterprise Zone funding that didn't end up going to personnel, that as long as we include the Enterprise Zone in what we do reach out for, that we've been utilizing that to put together really some marketing material. We haven't really had any marketing material for the last couple of years. Has this function on the industrial side really wasn't focused and being worked on?
You're saying it's a low probability? You go to some doctor's office, you read the magazines, like, a lot of states are advertising, like Utah, come to Florida, you know? I don't really see too many cities, but mainly states do that.
Right, and we're not marketing in a kind of a general sense. If we're going to market, it's really designed to try to be targeted. So I can tell you that we have been in the Western United States Real Estate. It's a magazine that goes to industrial brokers and end users. And we did put some of those dollars to run a six-month ad in that and said, you know, have you considered and looked at Fresno? When the council gave me the authority, or the city manager the authority, to go ahead and waive or reduce impact fees, that was something that we put in as part of that advertisement to say, you know, here's something we can sell for the city of Fresno that may, you know, set us apart from Rancho Cordova, or Turlock, or someplace else.
How are you guys doing on relocating businesses that are moved by the high-speed rail?
Well, and that has really not been a function that I have spent very much time on. That was a contract that I know the council and the city let through the High-Speed Rail Authority to the Economic Development Corporation of the County of Fresno. And so they've got a team of folks over there that are doing the relocation aspect of it.
Did we ever have anybody at City Hall that's housed here to assist people on high-speed rail?
Yes, Bonique, and I can't remember her last name right, Emerson, is in the Planning and Development Department, DARM's point of contact. And I know every Friday, she meets with the folks from the EDC. Amy from our office is in there as well. And I know Bruce has actively been engaged, and the city manager's been actively engaged in that.
So how does the city interface with EDC? Do you work together? Do they give you leads? Do you give them leads?
Yes, that is. And we're still working through how we're going to make sure that we get the leads from the state. So they are the point of contact, although we do hear stuff from the state as well. But they get a lot more of those leads from the state. And we're working together and handing off and making sure that none of those leads get lost, that everything gets responded to appropriately when we have a product that we can provide to that particular site location. And then really, the other piece that we're working on is that, and ultimately, the EDC has really kind of done this function for the last couple of years, although they do it amongst all of the 14 or 15 other cities and the county. although they do it amongst all of the fourteen or fifteen other cities and the county that they represent. But they've been handling, uh, retention and attraction, and we're working on, um, making sure that all of those get appropriately addressed and, and nothing.
Does Fresno County have their own staff or comparable position?
Um, to my knowledge, I don't, I think they may have one position, um, maybe two. I think they rely a lot on the EDC, um, to do that work.
Okay. And historically, maybe, George Ann or Bruce, has the city funded EDC? I know they used to fund the CVB years ago. Do they, have they ever, do we actually fund EDC?
Yes, back in 2007, 2006, 2005, we funded the EDC at about three hundred and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
We, we quit, what, about 2008, 2009?
Uh, it went down to, at one point, fifty thousand dollars. I think that was in 2008, 2009. And then we stopped funding it at all about two years ago, I think.
Okay. And, um, does Fresno County, member, uh, Brandell may know that she's on the board, does Fresno County fund EDC?
They, they do. Yes.
Do you know how much?
I'm, I think it's in the fifty thousand dollar range, but they sent them other contracts as well. So, the EDC just recently got a big, I'm going to say, this might not be the right language, but I think it's a social services kind of contract, and I'm not exactly sure. It, it's workforce training?
Employment training?
Sorry, they're, um, kind of taking some of the piece off of workforce with, uh, development, so they're trying to work directly with, uh, those that are receiving some type of assistance.
And, and I think it was for a couple hundred thousand dollars.
And I think it's a pilot project, so they get a chance to kind of see how it works. I apologize.
Larry, I don't know, Councilmember Brand, I think the fifty thousand dollars, I don't know if we've actually inked the deal. That's brand new, isn't it? Is the fifty thousand that the city of Fresno?
Oh, well, I don't think we've talked about that yet.
Is that what you?
No, we were talking about the, the county.
Yeah, what the county does.
The, the county has a contract with the EDC.
Oh, yeah.
And so, the county of Fresno, and I'm not sure how much, how much that is the county's contract with the Economic Development Corporation.
They spend a lot of money with EDC.
But, but on the, on the social services, the workforce, and I'm not sure if it's a workforce investment board or, or, um, which entity it is, but I do know that they, they have gotten another contract through that entity to provide services, um, for workforce training. Is it county? Okay, directly from the county.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Councilman Capriolio.
Thank, thanks, Council President. Um, I want to revisit that question I had earlier on the staffing of the public information positions. Good afternoon, George Ann, how are you?
Hi, thank you.
Earlier in the morning, we had a discussion about the one position being in two places. That's the community coordinator.
Right.
And then they were going to split that fee. Would that, what would be the total price for that particular position? Is that, I have ninety-three thousand, two hundred dollars. Is that about right? Fifty-five plus the thirty-seven?
I'm going to let you.
Yeah, uh, yeah, the total position cost is approximately ninety-three thousand dollars. So, it's split, I believe, sixty, forty between, uh, DPU admin and the city manager's office.
And then the director of communications, that cost is a hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars. Or does that money come out of that fund or?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
Wow. So, we have about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars proposed for communications?
Well, that's not all additional. There was some money in fourteen for, um, the position that Mr. Lukens used to occupy. So, the hundred and fifty-one is total, but we did have approximately sixty-four thousand dollars budgeted in this fiscal year in fourteen for a communications position in this, in the city manager's office. So, you'd have to take the, the difference between those two as far as the increase goes.
So, uh, does the director of communications get a hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars? I didn't understand that expla-, he does, okay. And then another assistant to that director of communications gets ninety-five thousand dollars roughly.
That's the, that's the position that's split between DPU and, and, and city manager's office.
But the object is communication?
Yes.
Do we really need two staff people, I mean?
Yeah, I would say, um, you know, under the city charter, the, the mayor has two main responsibilities. One, it's communications, and two, is economic development. So, when we're talking about communicating with the public, with our constituents, um, we think it's critical. Um, I think during the recession, you know, we cut way back on that, but I think what we found is, um, the public around us has a lot of, um, questions, and, um, we think the importance of transparency and what we're all doing here is critical for the public to be able to have confidence in what we're doing on a day-to-day basis and without an adequate, um, communications operation. I mean, and that runs the gamut from, um, our website, which is fourteen years old, and is the most, uh, cumbersome website that, we get complaints about it all the time. You can't find anything. It's not helpful. It's difficult to navigate. So, that's something that's going to benefit every single department in the city and every member of the public, no matter what part of the city they're trying to touch. So, that's a part of what the communications role, um, works on. Um, also, you know, just anything that has to do with communicating, um, not only with the media, but with getting information to the public. So, we feel it's a, um, a role that can't be, um, you know, under, underfunded because, one, it's one of the main responsibilities of the mayor is to communicate to the public, and just for purposes of transparency.
Would that service be available to each council district as well, that communications ability?
Um, yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, obviously, you know, within the capacity that we have, but I think that, um, already, um, if there's been issues that have come up that, um, a council member has had questions or, hey, you know, how can I do this or how can I do that? Um, but, by the way, Mark Sandriff is right here in the front row, our, our communications director. He's happy to, um, discuss and, and work with council offices.
Okay.
I mean, we don't, obviously, we don't want to be doing, going eight different directions with one person, but as far as, I, of course, it would depend on exactly what you're talking about. But generally speaking, yeah, if you want, if it's about communicating to the public, um, that's all what we want to do.
Yes, that's, that's our responsibility as well.
Yes.
Well, I look forward to, to meeting you, uh, eventually and, uh, working together, as well as whoever the, uh, community coordinator is. Have you got that position filled yet?
Yeah, you know, what we found is obviously, moving forward, we have a pretty aggressive and robust plan, um, for water within the city. And, um, you know, we're very sensitive about making sure that the utilities function, um, is not, um, doing, um, anything that the general fund should be doing. But what we have found happening is that the general fund is absorbing responsibilities of the utilities department. So, one, um, when it comes to communications, I understand you guys talked briefly about like the outside public relations contract. It's a pretty substantial contract that the utilities department has, and we felt it was imperative that we have a communications professional helping to oversee that contract and make sure that the materials and the outcomes coming out of that contract are, um, appropriate and responsible. And so, um, that is important. And then also, the messaging coming out of all of, um, all of this capital programming that we're going to be doing in water, um, that's going, has a potential to be very disruptive to members of the public. We have got to make sure that, um, as we move forward on the capital prob-, uh, program, there, there's communications with the public. And so, that's, um, so we felt it was, um, uh, prudent and responsible to have that position be shared with the utilities department, because otherwise, frankly, one, it would either be a hundred percent funded in the utilities department with not a lot of oversight and management by, um, the people responsible for communications, or two, it would be funded a hundred percent out of our division, which would mean the general fund was funding a utilities department obligation. So, we thought it was responsible and prudent to kind of split it the way we did and make sure that the oversight was happening out of the communication shop.
That's kind of the thrust of these questions is it, that, a lot of this is coming out of the general fund, and it's such a precious fund. If we can get the, uh, expenses covered in other areas, uh, that would be greatly appreciated, and we'll, we'll address that in a minute. But I did want to say that I listened to the director on a recent radio show, and he was awesome. So, I, if he could continue that with the water issues and that discussion, uh, it was very impressive. So, uh, I didn't have, had a chance to tell him that, but I'm telling you now.
Well, I'll let you tell him for, for yourself.
Did a great job.
I'm, I'm a recovering radio talk show host, so that's why it-
That was your comfort zone, huh?
Naturally, to me. But to kind of answer a couple of the questions that you had, uh, one of the important things, uh, in my role as director of communications is not just getting messages out there, to be in constant contact with the people in the press so that sometimes things that are happening in the city aren't misrepresented sometimes, uh, in the press, so that stories that could potentially come out are actually handled without any further, you know, interest or, or comment by members of the media. So, that's, that's also part of it. I've also had the opportunity to work, uh, with, uh, Councilmember Zhang's, uh, office on the, uh, the UAP, the Inspiration Park that, that recently opened, and certainly welcomed the opportunity to, to work with every single council member. Now, please keep in mind that I'm only one person now, and there's a limited amount of bandwidth that I have. Uh, but partially, i- i- as we're, as we're improving our website, as we're getting the analytics on a number of the, uh, the public relations aspects of the RFPs and the RFQs that we have out there, it's going to be helpful for you because you're going to be getting more information internally, too, and that's part of the communications role, that we're communicating within departments to let people know what's going on. So, there's press releases and internal messages happening all the time about job openings, about traffic alerts, special events, uh, you know, uh, special discounts or, or opportunities for city employees. These, these are all part of the process. And, uh, one thing that I actually take a great deal of pride in is the, uh, the daily media clips, the morning brief that comes out, to be able to give you information that I think is, is essential to preparing for your day. Uh, but again, I'm, I'm looking forward to, uh, getting the opportunity to add somebody to this department because the city of Fresno has been really without a communications shop now for the past five years. Uh, and, uh, there are cities that even here in California, smaller than us, that have shops that are two or three times the size. Um, we can handle it because, you know, we can do the job. And, uh, I look forward to having the opportunity to increase the communication link between our citizens and what goes on here in the city of Fresno as, uh, I stopped drinking out of the fire hose, having been on the job for roughly about fifty days so far. It's getting easier. If you're familiar with NFL quarterbacks, they talk about the game slowing down. It's really starting to slow down for me and to be much more manageable, so I'm not spending every waking moment. I get a little rest here every once in a while.
Well, thank you, and we look forward to working with you, definitely.
Thank you, me too.
George Ann, it, it seems from this dialogue that perhaps the, uh, community coordinator position should be fully funded through the, uh, Enterprise Zone with, with, regarding water in particular.
I'm not the Enterprise Zone, the enterprise, the enter, the utility department enterprise.
Is that a possibility to, uh, fully fund it through that department? Since it's the huge issue, as you indicated, at least for this year, would be water. So, for the upcoming fiscal year, that I think would be a good investment since that is a primary issue.
What's our split right now? Sixty what?
Sixty forty.
Who's sixty?
Uh, sixty is the city manager's office.
I just, you know, when you talk about, I just don't want to run the risk of having one person funded by two different sources of funding and, um, at the end of the year, find out that they worked, um, the utility was funding, um, forty percent of it, and actually, we only had them doing thirty-five percent of the utility. I just think that we err on the side of caution. Trust me, we know that the general fund is precious, but when it comes to spending utility funds on something other than a utility function, I just think that we need to be ultra cautious with that. I'll, I'll defer to the city manager to see if he thinks we can nibble around the edges or not, but-
Well, what I would prefer to do is, is we will use a cost accounting program in which the employee will basically bill, you'll understand this, billable hours to the appropriate, whether it's they're working on enterprise-related or other city-wide related activities. And then at the end of the fiscal year, we'll have a better understanding of how that split works out. But I agree with the chief of staff. Right now, it's, it, we'd rather be cautious and not have someone come back and say that you're spending more time on this versus that. But we will basically put in a system in place to account for that time. And you add, and let me add, it will probably spend quite a bit of time on not just water, as I mentioned this morning. We will be coming back, uh, and initiating a Prop 218 on residential solid waste, which is also going to, the timing couldn't be, be any worse, uh, go, uh, be coming forward probably within the next two months.
Under the billable hours theory in, in my profession, you need to update that, uh, probably monthly, but quarterly would be more important because then you can see how this is progressing. And at the end of the year, the horse is out of the barn, and it's a little bit too late. So, I would just urge you to consider that and to keep close accounting of that. And perhaps we could make that switch or adjustments, flip to sixty, forty or something, I don't know. But we'll, I think it's important.
Maybe we can look at it at mid-year, but I think definitely six months in, if, um, we're all in on water and solid waste, then who knows? It could be ninety-nine percent of it is going to be funded by the utility. But once again, when you start getting into the, having, you know, ju-, we just don't want to run the risk of spending utility funding on anything other than a utility function.
That segues into Enterprise Zone staff. Um, it seems at the beginning that's funded by the Enterprise Zone that it serves, and then sometime, uh, first of the year, it would be flipped into the general fund?
So, um-
Is that the same analysis?
Yeah, that was a program that Governor Brown, um, well, and the legislature eliminated, um, and, but it had a phase-out date. Um, so, we, we went ahead and kept it in the budget with a phase-out and being funded by the general fund because there are discussions ongoing about re-establishing a portion or some component of that program that might, um, have a similar self-funding, um, ability. And so, because it, you know, in the past, that function has been, um, self-supported with the money that it brings in through the vouchers. It covers the cost of the staff. So, I think once we get to the point where it's completely, you know, there's no more enterprise funding coming in, and we're at the point of rolling into the general fund, if there's no substitute program that's been put in at the state, I mean, we're going to certainly have to look at, um, what, um, the, the staff positions that are there and, um, look and see what the function is, and if they have enough work, um, still moving forward, and decide where to go from there, if, if there's not a substitute program coming in behind it.
So, the January first date is not a hard number?
Um, is it completely out by January one? No more revenue? Larry, do you know that?
Yeah, there's, there's only half a year revenue budgeted, because I believe the voucherings ends on December 31st, so.
Okay.
Okay, hold on, Larry.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Capriolio. No, no, it's not a hard and fast. So, the, the program and the ability to voucher, uh, to put in vouchers, um, the program actually stopped December 31st of 2013. But they give you then a year to put in vouchers through December 31st of 2014. Uh, we have funding through the, the rest of this year, but then we will continue, um, into the next year. There'll still be vouchering, um, there'll still be remnant pieces of that'll, that'll be handled. And we'll have some, uh, holdover cash that will be available to help defer those costs that will, um, if not spent otherwise, will, will be around to help that. Uh, the other thing that I would add, and, um, uh, the state did get rid of, rid of the Enterprise Zones, but they have gone ahead and they've put in two other, or three other programs, um, in place of that. And they've taken, uh, a lot of the function out of the cities for the, um, tax breaks. There's employer tax break, and, and we got involved in and were involved in, and, um, uh, the positions you're talking about were funded by the voucher program that was the new hire tax incentive program. That tax incentive program actually continues to exist. It's just the state, the city, the state took away the vouchering process from the city. The city doesn't do vouchering anymore. It's been moved over to the Franchise Tax Board. And the Franchise Tax Board will now handle, uh, that program. And one of the things that, that I, I would, um, highlight, uh, and this is kind of an aside, but, um, it, it isn't nearly as a stronger program as it was when it was the Enterprise Zone. However, a month ago, the city of Fresno was one of three areas in the state that got designated as a pilot project area. The way the new system goes is that you can get a, for a new hire, in certain areas, you can get a tax incentive. And the tax incentive under the standard program now put in state through the Franchise Tax Board says that if the minimum wage, or, and, um, if you're paying above a hundred and twenty-five percent of the minimum wage-
say the minimum wage is at twelve, well, it'll be at ten here pretty soon, but you'd have to pay twelve dollars to be, or greater, to get the incentive program. So you'd have to pay your employees fourteen or fifteen dollars, and then you would get the difference in the tax incentive from the twelve dollars to the fourteen dollars. So you'd get a tax incentive for the two-dollar difference under the, the program that is currently with the state. Us being designated a pilot program says actually that hundred and twenty-five percent goes to just one hundred percent of the minimum wage. So when minimum wage turns to ten dollars and you're paying your employee fourteen dollars, you'll get a tax incentive on the four-dollar difference, not the two-dollar difference. I probably didn't explain it very well, but, but hopefully that folks can, can follow that. So anyway, that to be said is that we're still going to help assist folks get through the process of going to the Franchise Tax Board and getting that. Now, we're not going to get paid from the state to do that. They're not going to send us back a chunk of money to do the voucher-ing. But the plan is, is, is these folks who understand the system and the process, the two clerical, that we will use them to continue to help our employers. And we had thousands of vouchers every year that went through this system in the city of Fresno. And then there are some other programs that we are adding into that they're a critical component of. So we have now, for the first time, at least as far as I know in this organization, we have a proactive outreach to businesses currently in the community where each month we're sending out letters from the mayor saying three or four different things. One is, we now have a business-friendly Fresno, so we're here if you're ready to expand. You're going to have lower, lower processing costs and faster times. That we have the, the differ, the incentive programs for lowering your impact fees, and, and a couple of other. I, I won't, I won't go trail on, sorry.
Okay, thank you very much.
I could see, maybe I'm, I'm talking too much.
Got you, thank you.
No, I didn't hear you. Did you say be quiet?
The, George Ann, one last question. On the emergency manager office, it says that position would be transferred to the fire department. That's B thirty-three.
I'm going to let the city manager's office take that one if you don't mind.
Okay, is that position a city position or a fire department position now?
It's a general fund position, so all we're doing is just moving the PCN that used to be housed in the city manager's office over to the fire department.
That was pretty simple. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, screen is clear. Thanks, George Ann, Larry, and Jane for catching us up. We're all done for the day. Tomorrow we come back at eight-thirty in the morning with a regular council day at half-day, and then we resume budget motions in the afternoon. Thank you, everybody.